Welcome to the October 22nd, 2024 City of Half Moon Bay Planning Commission Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you take a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Riddick?
Present.
Commissioner Hernandez?
I am present.
Commissioner Gorn?
I'm here.
Vice Chair Johannes?
Here.
And Chair Gossett?
Here.
All five commissioners are present this evening. I'm just going to take a moment to go over some protocol before we officially start the meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Planning Commission meeting of October 22nd, 2024. Our meetings are broadcasted live on Pacific Coast TV's website page as well as the local channel 27. We also have Spanish interpretation at our meeting. A few brief comments for public comment etiquette. Those in person will be chosen first and then we will pick up on our Zoom platform. Planning Commission Chair will open up the general public comment section of the agenda. At that time, community members are welcome to speak on any items that are not listed on the evening's agenda. For those items that are specifically on tonight's agenda, the Chair will have the discretion of public comment and will comment and make her statement at that time. If anyone would like to speak that's in person, it's helpful to have a green card at that time. If you're on Zoom, please push star to raise and unraise your hand, or star six, sorry. And mute is star nine. We do have a few public comments and those were transferred over to their commission earlier this afternoon. I would like to remind all of us to please speak into the mics when you're at the podium. Public comment and also for us commissioners and staff to speak into the mic so that the TV and the hybrid folks can hear us. Thank you, everyone, for your patience and I'm going to turn it back to Chair Gossett.
Thank you, Bridget. At this point, I would ask that we look at the minutes and consider approval of the minutes from October 9th, 2024.
Please note that there's some red lines too, Commission.
I read the minutes. I have no changes to them. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Opposed? Okay. Motion to pass.
Okay, at this time, I'll ask anyone from the public to speak about any item that's not on the agenda. Okay, Bridget, do we have anyone online that would like to speak on any item not on the agenda?
I'm seeing none.
Okay, thank you. So, since we do not have anyone to speak on public hearing items that are not on the agenda, I will go ahead and introduce item 1A and turn this mic over to Kristi.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Commission. This is a continued item from the last Planning Commission meeting. This is the Hyatt Place Hotel project. The staff memo that was provided essentially provided some additional information on several different topics. So I'm going to walk through those in not a great level of detail and just trust that the Commission will ask for any additional information that's needed. But we did want to at least touch on all of those and provide a little bit of context for the members of the public as well. Just a couple of reminder slides for those who are new in the audience or listening. The project is located on the south side of Main Street and Highway 1. It's comprised of three parcels. One being an existing auto dealership parcel on the north side of Seymour Street. Parcel two being the existing auto dealership itself on the south side of Seymour Street. And the third parcel being the five acre vacant parcel that is the subject of the future hotel site. The project description, again, not in too much detail, but a 102-room hotel on the hotel site with associated site improvements, slight expansion to the auto dealership site for additional parking, and then a four lot subdivision of 1.15 acre site on the north side of Seymour Street for future residential development. And the approvals sought by the applicant, coastal development permit, architectural review for the hotel, tentative parcel map, parking exception for the hotel only, and then the certification of the final impact, environmental impact report. So the staff report provides additional information on several specific items. We listed them here, listed them in the staff report. I won't go through them, the list here, but we'll talk about each of them individually. The first being some additional information about policy conformance with the local coastal land use plan. This is something the Commission talked about for some time at the last meeting and there were some questions and additional information sought about the project's consistency with local coastal land use plan policies specifically related to Chapter 9 on the scenic and visual resources. And just kind of a high level look at this, it's the Planning Commission's role to determine the project's consistency with the local coastal land use plan policies and to make findings accordingly. This can often be tricky. Most general plan and land use plan policies are typically subjective in nature. They're not objective or prescriptive. And there can also be tension between policies and the balancing of community needs is very important. Some of the land use plan policies that the Commission was talking about at the last meeting had a lot of more generalized language such as minimize, enhance, provide, protect. And there's some, there's some interpretation that goes into what exactly does that mean? How much is too much? How little is too little? What's just right? And so that is, that's what the Planning Commission is looking at today. The staff provides recommendations. The Planning Commission takes those in and makes the decisions that they make. The suggestions for policy consistency are just that they're suggestions from staff and they're provided for Commission consideration. In, with the scenic and visual resource policy consistency determinations, there was a question about some other projects in Half Moon Bay and maybe in other communities, coast side communities that struggled with some similar issues or we're also looking at policy consistency with views, aesthetics. So what we did was provide some information on three somewhat recent projects in Half Moon Bay. Started to look at larger communities further afield from Half Moon Bay and some of their policies and how they, Planning Commission, made policy determinations and consistency determinations that proved to be very challenging. Every coast side community is a little different, policies are different. The issues that are important to those communities are different. So at the end of the day, we kind of came back to Half Moon Bay and wanted to take a look at what were some, what were some projects that struggled with these same issues? And what were the determinations that were made on those? So in the memo, we have some information about two, two-story buildings that were built on lots adjacent to State Route 1, Highway 1, project at 555 Poplar and 543 Filbert Street. These were both projects that were approved by the Planning Commission in 2019. Just for example or for some context, the findings of approval for both of these projects concluded that the projects both would obstruct some limited existing views of the east ridge line from Highway 1, the scenic corridor. But in a fleeting manner in that the impacts affecting the protected areas would not be substantial. There were a couple of recent photos of both buildings now that they have been constructed and were included in the memorandum for context only, not suggesting that these are apples-to-apples comparisons to the hotel project or that there was any mathematics involved in creating these, but were an attempt to get a similar view towards a similar ridge line of a recently approved project that had to deal with some of those same concerns that the Planning Commission is looking at now. Another project that was Half Moon Bay specific was the Coast Side Fire Protection District Tower, a 45-foot tall fire training tower at, on the south end of Main Street. Similar community concerns related to view impacts and conformance with the city's visual resource policies. The project is ultimately approved by the Council, made it to the Coastal Commission, and they considered this project on appeal. However, did not find that the approved development resulted in significant visual resource problems. And the development was found to be visually compatible with the character of the view shed at this location. So these are, again, just examples provided at the request of the Commission to, to give some context to the discussion that you're having tonight and some of the issues that, that the Commission is, is working through. One of the second item that has some additional information in the staff memo is the Transportation Demand Management Program and Parking Management. Some detail on kind of how the TDM program came about, how, that it's required by one of the mitigation measures of the EIR. Half Moon Bay has determined that if a project can reduce its VMT by 15% or more, it can be considered to not have a significant impact under CEQA. This is in alignment with the County CCAG guidance as well. So the Transportation Impact Analysis Report that was done for the Hyatt project identified measures to reduce the vehicle trips by 15.4%. It's a whole menu of different measures that will need to be in place prior to occupancy of the hotel. There's a condition of approval that says what the applicant needs to do in order to get the TDM program ultimately approved by the city and through CCAG review as well. And the TDM program actually doesn't focus on parking management, but by reducing vehicle trips ideally leads to a lesser need for parking. And the parking operations could be controlled by a new condition of approval. And we have a draft one here for your, for your consideration if that is something that the Commission would like to see applied to this project. The condition of approval is up here on the slide. It's not in your staff report, but should this be something the Commission would like to see, it can certainly be added to the, the resolution and to the Commission's motion. Just without, without reading it verbatim and, and risk people falling asleep. The parking plan is, condition essentially notes that an advanced plan needs to be provided to the city prior to issuance of building permit. And at a minimum, the plan needs to demonstrate that the total peak employee and guest parking demand can be accommodated on-site or off-site if necessary. And then the tools put into place to ensure that enforcement. The third item that is reviewed and, and discussed in the memo is the Statement of Overriding Considerations that the Planning Commission would need to make should they choose to approve the project. The Statement of Overriding Considerations, it's tricky. I mean, it's a, it's just, it's a complex issue and it's kind of, I find it a little difficult to kind of, you know, wrap my head around how, how that gets, how that gets done, how that gets made, how that gets discussed at the diocese can be, can be complex. But I did want to draw the distinction between kind of two separate issues that feel like they're related, but they are indeed two distinct issues. There is the impact that's identified in the final EIR. There is one significant impact that cannot be mitigated. And that is listed here, Impact AES 3, which says that the project would substantially degrade the existing visual character or quality of public views of the site and its surroundings. So this is an impact that is identified under CEQA. This impact, while related to visual character and public views, is not exactly the same as the LCLUP policies. So the Commission actually, should they choose to, find that there is this impact, there is this significant and unavoidable impact, and the project could also be found to be consistent with the LCLUP, Scenic and Visual Resource Policies, because while very closely related, they are different and distinct. So just wanted to draw your attention to that if that's something that you're struggling with how to reconcile those two things. So if so desired, the Commission can determine that the CEQA impact exists while still determining the project is consistent with the local coastal land use plan. They aren't exactly the same. A Statement of Overriding Considerations is required if the Commission decides they want, finds their way to approving this project. So that is a, a integral part of the, of the CEQA resolution. The Statement of Overriding Considerations, it has this, this language in there overriding. It does not override CEQA and it does not override the local coastal land use plan. It's actually an integral part of CEQA compliance. And again, while related, is separate and distinct from the local coastal land use plan policies. The draft Statement of Overriding Considerations, which are spelled out in the staff memo as well as in the CEQA resolution, those are draft, those are for the Commission's consideration. They can be revised as you see fit. There's a, a list of several considerations in there. There, there's no magic number of how many there need to be. If you don't, if you feel like any of them, you, the collective commission, feel like there are any in there that are not appropriate, you may strike them, you may put other ones in, in their place. You can add or remove reasons from the draft Statement of Overriding Considerations. And happy to talk the Commission through that if you get to that point this evening. One, another item that was covered in the staff memo is an explanation of the assessment of cumulative impacts in the final EIR. And this list was compiled in 2018 when the EIR Notice of Preparation was published. There was some question about whether recently approved or pending residential projects such as 555 Kelly that was approved, 880 Stone Pine, which is a pending project, were included in that list of cumulative projects. They were not, they were not conceived at the time that the cumulative projects list was built. However, CEQA does not require updating the cumulative impacts list as the draft EIR and final EIR are developed. CEQA does not require that each time there's a new project that analysis be done and/or redone. Furthermore, there's, in the case of this project and this EIR, there is no evidence to suggest that the EIR contains an inadequate analysis of the severity and significance of the potential cumulative impacts of the project plus its surrounding environment. Another item that was covered in the staff memo, there was a request for an additional condition of approval regarding the lot retirement. That was a good catch and a good add. Condition of approval C6 has been added to the project approval resolution. This is, the lot retirement is something that normally happens by matter of course, but having the condition of approval spell it out is now there. Additional, another bit of additional information provided in the staff memo was further explanation on the need for a use permit for a hotel on the project site. The draft EIR and final EIR indeed did contain an error by stating that the hotel would need a use permit until the site is rezoned. It does not. The CG zoning is applicable to the project site. This does not require a use permit for the hotel. So because the error exists in the draft EIR and final EIR, we published an errata that was attached to the staff memo to document this correction in both of those documents. It's attachment four to the staff memo. Last couple of items here, there was a request for more information about the transient occupancy tax collected in Half Moon Bay. It is not available on a hotel-by-hotel basis. Not publishable on a hotel-by-hotel basis, but we do have the TOT for the, the last five years range from 4.8 million in 2020 to 9.4 million. That was the high in 2021. It's since come down a little bit. There are 586 hotel rooms within the city of Half Moon Bay. And so we have, have here in 2023, the average annual TOT per hotel room, just around $14,000. And that's just a straight math of how many rooms, what the total TOT was. So that is not broken down by occupied room or non-occupied room or any hotel. That was just a, just straight across the board division problem there. But just provided again for context. The last bit of additional information that was provided in the staff memo was about the site on Seymour Street. A couple of clarifications on the existing use permit for the existing valid use permit for the existing auto dealership parking on that 1.15 acre site. Any future residential development will need to provide details on the compatibility of this new residential development with any existing parking use. That would be on the remainder of the lot depending on how, the phasing of how that residential were to happen. So when the future residential application is made, those, you know, details of compatibility would be looked at at that time. If compatibility uses exist, the use permit would need to be modified at that time as need, well, as needed to address any specific issues. Right now, there are no specific issues known because residential currently exists next to the auto dealership site. So this operates under the assumption that, you know, future issues wouldn't arise. But if they did, at the time, the future residential development application was made, the use permit could be modified then. Related to the tentative parcel map application, there was a question as to whether this was suitably and thoroughly addressed in the EIR. Indeed, a subdivision of land for residential uses was analyzed in the draft EIR Alternative 2. Between Alternative 2 and the proposed project, which was modified Alternative 2 in the final EIR, the number of lots proposed has actually been reduced from eight to four. And the draft and final EIR covers the proposed parcel map. So that has been adequately studied. That is a somewhat brief summary of the issues identified in the staff memo. We're happy to answer any questions that the Commission has about additional information provided. And just to highlight the options before the Planning Commission this evening, because we had some additional attachments to this memorandum, we went to make sure we clearly laid out how those fit into the options that the Commission has. One being, which was staff's recommendation at the, in the last staff report, to certify the final EIR and approve the project. And in doing so, the Commission would be adopting the updated CEQA resolution. That's apply, that's attached to this memo. And adopting the updated project approval resolution, also attached to this memo. Just for clarity, there's a lot of pieces to attachment to. All of those pieces are, would be combined and that's, that's all part of the full resolution that would be adopted. Alternatively, the Planning Commission could choose to deny the project. This evening, there is a draft resolution of denial attached to the staff memo. If the Commission went down that road, they would need to provide some detail on why, the details of, of why the Commission would be denying the project. And so that information would be included in that denial resolution. And just to clarify that, should the Commission deny the project, there's no need to take any action on the EIR, not the EIR resolution. You wouldn't need to discuss the Statement of Overriding Considerations. Those are only needed if the project were approved. That concludes the staff presentation. Doug and I are here to answer any questions and turn it back over to the Chair.
Kristi, can you leave that slide up? I'm sorry. I just really want to thank you for putting this slide up because it wasn't in our first presentation, presentation last, at our last hearing. And I really appreciate that you did that and I just wanted to thank you for that.
At this time, I am going to open the public hearing. And the first speaker will be Linda Mead, followed by Anne Maury, and you'll each have two minutes.
I don't envy your position. I moved to Half Moon Bay in 1987, I think. And this is a town that I've actually fallen in love with. I enjoy being here, I love the people, I love this place. I've had nothing but good feelings and good things happening here. But I am concerned about where this town is going. And it seems to me, and it started, I started realizing it only recently, well, not really, but with the five-story building. And before that, with the three-story building built on Main Street. There are many places in the United States where they keep the town looking a certain way, feeling a certain way, making the people happy to be here. I'm happy to be here. But I don't want this to turn into five-story buildings, three-story hotels, messing up views, and I don't... And I don't believe, to be honest with you, that 15% reduction in travel trips will ever happen if you put a hotel up. It's just not possible. We'll have more. We have more now. It's, you know, we should be moving towards looking at how we can reduce traffic, or fix roads, or whatever it is, make parks. People who come here are happy, but we can do more. And I don't think putting up a hotel, since we already have 586 rooms, and I don't know if these are all viable, rentable rooms, because we have hotels that have changed into living quarters. So my feeling is, we don't need another hotel. We just don't. And I don't deny people making a living, but that's my opinion.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
My name's Anne Maury. Just a couple of points, more or less following the points that the previous speaker made. One, this would have been nice if it was on the ballot, you know? Then everybody could have had their say. People come and speak, and it's just a small minority, and then you have to make the decision as the council. If it was on the ballot, it would, everybody would be involved. And my second point is, how is this Hyatt going to improve the quality of life for the residents of Half Moon Bay and the coast? It just, it's all about living here and enjoying it and the quality of life. So it's, I suppose it's going to give some people employment, but that sort of seems like it. Quality of life is important to be considered. All right. The third issue is, I hate to see the city depending on income from hotels. Because this year, my understanding is, the city's in debt because a lot of people didn't stay at the Ritz Carlton. And then I guess how much the Ritz Carlton pays the city was part of the budget. So occupancy of rooms seems to be an up and down thing depending on a lot of variable factors. Hate to see the budget around hotel rooms. And if we get some money from the Hyatt, if it goes in, there's some money, I'd like to, not to have the money just go into the general fund. I'm pro recreation for the citizens. I'd like to see some money earmarked for recreation improvements, maybe a park with some lawns, swimming program, something for recreation for the citizens. There's not even a decent park in Half Moon Bay for the citizens, all ages. Couple of points. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Brent Turner, followed by Naomi Patridge.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Brent Turner. I'm a Half Moon Bay resident. I just wanted to agree with the previous speakers and say that due to traffic considerations and the lack of full occupancy or close to full occupancy with our other existing hotels, it seems like this is something that is not needed. I'm very sensitive to the feel of the town. At a certain point, it's good enough, and it's probably the best in the state, if not in the country, for living and quality of life. I would be very, very mindful to preserve what we have as it's a jewel and not to paint a mustache on the Picasso. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Followed by Chris Lynn.
I'm a little shorter than he is. Good evening, planning commission staff and audience. I'm here basically to make some statements, and I'm not sure how to say them because I'm really concerned about the city. I've lived here all my life, 84 years, and I see our city being divided by all the different kinds of things that we've been trying to do. To me, this project is really a project that is much needed. I'll tell you why. Number one, we as the city of Half Moon Bay have been declared by the Coast Commission as a visitor-serving community. And so when I sat on the council, people would come up and say, you can't do this, you can't do this. But the, we were deemed to serve as a visitor-serving facility. So as a hotel, you're providing one right downtown, historical downtown, they walk downtown, they're going to shop downtown, and they're going to eat downtown. So for me, this was probably a better location because they don't need to get in their cars and drive to look at our wonderful town. Not only that, we are in dire straits financially. And the only way this city can make money, ladies and gentlemen, is through hotels and TOTs. We can't get businesses here to come because we have no way of transporting any type of product out of here. So all we have is visitors coming to our city and spending their money. It's hard to say that, but after serving on city council, I found out, when we were designated that, we don't have much choice of what we can do with our city if we want to be viable. And, and even though we were, you know, sued for $33 million, we paid that suit off. We became a whole city. And only the reason was because we had the TOT, and we had the insurance, and we had the foresight to get out of it. So I'm encouraging you to please do that. I do not want to see this city fall into dire straits again. We cannot survive another, because right now, we're in $4 million deficit, you guys. You got to think of how we're going to raise money for this city. We're not going to do bake sales.
Thank you, Naomi. Chris Lynn, and then after Chris Lynn, Hal Bogner.
Thank you. Chris Lynn with the coast side chamber. I want to agree with Naomi 100%. I want to clarify that of, that on our average day, we have 530 available rooms on the coast side, 261 of them are at the Ritz Carlton, and therefore out of the budget of our average tourists. We need more mid-range rooms for what we really want, which is mid-week, not the weekend. We get the weekends are full. Mid-week corporate groups. Had the pleasure of meeting with a group last night that we are trying to woo here, but we only have like two possible options, and Lord love it, if they pick a day when a wedding is happening, we lose that revenue. We are in dire need of a mid-range project like the Hyatt that fulfills so many of the needs that we have. And for those who have mentioned equality of life, do you enjoy having a sheriff on the coast side? Because that contract is paid by the TOT, and the current deficit is primarily due to the sheriffs realigning their contracts backs with what they say it costs to be here. That contract is not getting any lower. It is only going to continue to rise at a rate that we cannot keep up with. If this Hyatt does not go through, I hope that all 4,353 households in the city limits of Half Moon Bay is willing to walk into City Hall and pay $230 to a year to recoup the TOT that would be lost by not having this go through. And lastly, our businesses on Main Street are only alive because of tourist dollars of 80%. So again, don't want a hotel? Spend more money in town.
Thank you. And after that, Julie McHenry.
Hal Bogner. I, listening to the TOT talk here, you know, it's quite at odds with the analysis in the submission by Mr. Shore, which I had looked over closely, and I had actually wondered with respect to the occupancy that he described, whether not only might it not increase TOT, but if it causes some of the existing properties in town to have to battle more for, for the number of stays that are available, might even lead to price reductions and a reduction of TOT. So there's been a lot of talk, but, you know, I think a full economic analysis might be in order because it's not within the purview of the planning commission probably to perform such financial analyses. And you're being asked to make a finding on this, which seems sort of something like the city council maybe should have, you know, done before it's brought to you. With respect to a couple of other questions, it seems kind of weird to me that there's two completely separate projects here, and somehow they're not contiguous. One's a hotel south of the, of the Ford dealership, and the other is some housing, some condominiums on the north side of Seymour Street. It seems like if you have two completely separate parcels with unrelated developments in two places in the city, how can you call them one project? With respect to the views, you know, I agree with the view issues. It is really an entry to the town, but I've seen the analyses from the highway, walking along the Naomi Patridge Trail on the west side of the highway, I think it's even more pronounced. I walked the trail and looked at the Boys and Girls Club Cunha Gym, and it's pretty bulky against the ridge line. So I think that's a serious issue. And those are my comments. I know you struggle with these decisions, but I think that more information about the TOT, it seems like it's really also, it's three-quarters of a mile or so walk to town. I don't see how people will walk into town from there very much. Thank you.
Julie McHenry. In regards to the visual corridor, I was at many of the planning meetings when the land use plan was created. And so, and that was done very intentionally, lots of thought. It took years. It was a huge effort, probably cost a lot of money. And now it seems like the idea is to just, you know, override that plan. So I don't understand why so much time and energy goes into a plan, and the visual corridors are definitely a policy in that plan, and now the advice is to just overlook the plan. So that's one problem I have. In terms of the parking exception, I would like to hear more discussion about the meeting space. My understanding is there's a 1,200 square foot meeting room in the hotel. That's going to be used, I assume, for weddings, corporate meetings. Where are all those people going to park? So I think that's really important, that hasn't been discussed at all. And then my last comment is, in just regards to what Hal said about the residential project being added on. I think they should be severed. I think it should be completely considered differently on its own timeline, go through the same process that any other housing process has to go through. I do not see why it needs to be connected to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Auler.
Oh, Adler, I'm sorry. And then Paul McGregor.
Good evening. I'm here again, and I want to just repeat everything that Naomi said. So first of all, I want to compliment the staff and consultants for the amazing body of work that they created for this project. And I want to compliment you as commissioners for all of the time and effort that you put into it. You have a weighty responsibility. In my words, you're guardians of the public trust, and in such a way that the decisions you make are not erasable next year or the year after, they're going to last for decades and decades. And so that's important. But you also have an obligation to protect private rights. You need to assure that governance is applied evenly, fairly, without bias and without cronyism. And that weighs just as heavily as the public considerations. And this is private property. The sponsor's family have a right to monetize this asset. And over the last eight years, they've seen their return on investment diminish. Now, you may say that that's a process of good governance. I would tell you that it's also a love letter from the sponsor's families to the city of Half Moon Bay. They have made this project, I think, a jewel. The overriding considerations that you're confronted with to make a decision on today, I think, clearly outweigh the one measure that you have to deal with, which is the view corridor. The project is consistent with the fabric and the texture and the flavor, and as such as other desirable properties that we have in Half Moon Bay. And in addition to the many points that have been made here about taxes, jobs, and other of the overriding considerations, I believe that it's going to vitalize the South Main Street corridor in ways that haven't yet been identified. So thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner Paul McGregor, resident of the coast side. Last meeting I attended, there was concerns, what I heard was many people were really worried about the height of the building and not being able to see it from Highway One as they drove by or walked by. I can understand that. I built 555 Poplar myself, and at that point in time, there was people concerned about the height of that building at that time. What I have to say about that is 555 Poplar is much closer to Highway One than this hotel is. So with the significant setbacks that the hotel has, I don't, I don't see it blocking the views as maybe other people see it. The nimbyism of not wanting another hotel is unwarranted. People from all over the state want to come to this place and enjoy it. Why should they be denied? I don't understand that. This will bring more business to the area, especially on Main Street, which really needs it because the town is like shut down at 8:00. There's really nothing going on here. Need a little more life in this place, you know? Let's bring some life back to the place. And I understand traffic concerns, but, you know, we just had a pumpkin festival. That's a major concern too. But this is, this is going to reduce the amount of cars that are going to be coming down here, and they'll be staying at the hotel. Please vote yes on this, and please remember, there's a little bit of Karen in all of us. Thank you.
Tom Currie, and after Tom, Jim Mercuto. And then Dave Shore.
Good evening, Tom Currie, 114 Magellan Avenue, Half Moon Bay. First of all, I, you know, the last time I was here, we were here till 11:30. I hope we have a vote on this project tonight, at least make an answer, yes or no. My first project was here with my mom when I was 20, which was actually 50 years ago. And in this 50 years, I have never seen a project, especially one, this is one that's brought by a local family that works and lives here, gives so much. They have been over eight years on this project, and I've been to a lot of these meetings, and they have cut this as much as anything I've ever seen. And I've done a, I've seen a whole lot, and, but most of all, it's going to help this downtown. And I live, I have a house on the other side of the hill. This place is dead. Let's be, let's be serious. It dies at 7:30. This place needs some money. Those retailers are dying. This hotel is a little different than the rest of the hotels we have. It's a Hyatt Park. It's going to have a different type of clientele. Business people use it, and it's going to bring people downtown, spend money, and hopefully survives this city, which is, which is really headed down to, which is really headed down to, down for the worst I've ever seen. And it concerns me because I've been here a long time, and I know my kids through our parcels, we're going to be here a long time. I do have property close by to this, and I think it hopefully will enhance my property, but I'm all for it, something this city needs. And I see, I see nothing wrong with this project. It enhances this city, and it'll put money in everybody's pockets. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, I think it was Jim. Okay, if you want to, you guys can work it out.
Good evening all. Former Mayor Patridge correctly identified that we're a visitor-serving community. The twin and challenging mandate of the Coastal Commission is to balance visitor-serving needs with preservation of the coastal assets that people come here to see. The cover letter from the Coastal Commission, the first page of that recommending certification of the LUP that we're talking about here, says, in discussing the LUP, it is probably best understood as refining the existing LUP to better protect coastal resources and better reflect the city's vision for its community. So we've got this twin, this balancing act, that's what you guys are trying to do. I don't know if any of you saw the New York Times article about Big Sur, I think it was on Friday. And their, their local, their land use plan says basically, if you can see it from the highway, you can't build it. We are not that. You're nodding your head, Stevie. We are not Big Sur. We are a more urbanized environment. But still, the common feature there is preserving the visual character that people come here to see. And that's embodied in our LUP. That's where you have to find consistency if you are going to issue a CDP. There's different opinions on how you parse and split the numbers on hotel occupancy. No time to get into that, but this is either a very complex decision with a lot of moving parts, or it boils down to that simple decision of LUP consistency. And if you can't find that, you can't issue a CDP and we can all go home. Thank you.
Thank you. After Jim, I have Greg Jamison.
Hi, good evening, Jim Mercureo here. I just wanted to take a moment first to really thank the city staff for the incredible work they did. I mean, the amount of detail, not only what you started with even leading up to this, even last week or two weeks ago, but for the follow-up work that you did was absolutely incredible, great detail. And I think you've taken into consideration all the questions, the comments, the concerns that the commission had raised, and I think you did so in such a responsible way. I think now as you, I was going to say pontificate, but I'll say deliberate here, I would request and invite you to take the following approach when you do so, and avoid the easy path of no because, right? So often, it's always no because. What I'm asking you to do is take a more mature response and say yes if. And I think your city staff has done an incredible job of providing you the detail for you to be able to say yes if. Your staff has done a terrific job, provided ample reasons for you to say just that. So I encourage you to say yes on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. David Kline.
Good evening. In 1994, I founded an effort to develop a Boys and Girls Club on the Coast Side. Some of the things I'm hearing here tonight, or the same objections, are heard in 1994. The Boys and Girls Club on the Coast Side has been a great thing for the Coast Side. It's helped over 5,000 kids. This facility we're talking about now is going to enhance the coast. Someone that's living on the coast, they participated on the coast, this is a good project. The view, the silhouettes of the mountains, very, very minimal. You have to go, you have to go out of your way to object to what that's going to do. This is a good project. I manage properties up and down Main Street. The south end of Main Street doesn't have a lot of business. We've been trying to promote the business going there. This is a good project. You really should support it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Bridget, I'm going to ask if anyone online wishes to speak.
Yes, we have.
Oh, I'm sorry, Greg.
Greg's not called you.
Over. Sorry about that.
Good evening, Chair Gossett and Commissioners. I just want to say that, as you know, I've been working on this project for eight years. I've been part of this community. Our dealership began, has almost been here 40 years now. Very well entwined with our, with our community. In 2014, I was appointed to the General Plan Committee from council at that time. Spent, what, seven years approximately that we did that to 2021. I learned a lot about our city. I participated in many meetings, some were other workshops that had nothing to do with that, but I learned a lot about the things that our community wants. And this project itself has, you know, made many modifications. My goal here is to support our community, to provide jobs, to provide a beautiful gateway. These changes that have been made have been from people such as Dave Shore. He's had some interesting ideas and I support that and I've made those changes. The property, as you know, the way the property, the buildings are set back, was the goal to have all this open space, enhance our gateway, and support our neighbors, to minimize intrusion with parking. The neighbors use most of Main Street. We're trying to keep all of our parking on site. We're trying to do the best we can do with that. I think that what we're trying to do here is good for our community and I hope you can see that, that's what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
I have one online. Carrie Burke. Go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. Carrie Burke, in support of the Hyatt project. And with regards to the overriding considerations, a hospitality business is a wonderful way to welcome people to the southern entrance to our historic downtown area while providing visitor-serving accommodations, low-cost options, jobs, and a walkable connection to the rest of our downtown area. The property owner has listened for years to public input on this project and made significant changes to reflect the desires of the city while dealing with a uniquely shaped lot with many challenges. This final design provides a generous amount of open space, trails, protection of natural habitat, while creating a new vitality for this underutilized area that on balance will have a significant positive attribute for the southern gateway. I support this project, hope it's approved, and build and adds to our tax base. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all I have for public.
Okay, thank you. I will now close the public hearing. And Matthew, I think you said you were going to come up and make a statement before we go into clarifying questions. I'm sorry, we do have one more online speaker. So let me reopen the public hearing.
Jay Schmidt, you can unmute. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I have to agree with some of the other residents who have been here a longer time. We've been here a little over 10 years. And just in the short time that we've been here, we really appreciate the quiet of Half Moon Bay, to be honest, and the views that we have now. And if you look at those story poles when you drive by, I can't see how anyone would not see the obstruction that is going to take place with a hotel there. Also with the issue of the parking, I'm wondering exactly how much parking it would allow for the meeting space along with the guests. And I'm not, you know, I'm not sure what statistics we have on that. And when you look at the two-story homes and how they've impacted the mountain views, there's a big difference between that and what these story poles show. So I think you're trying to balance tourism with residents who live here. I think that's tricky, but I think that we residents who live here have more of a say than developers should, should. And our quality of life should override what we're expecting to entertain visitors. So I would hope that even if we're a minority in speaking in this meeting, that we would have an important voice. Thank you.
Thank you. And Bridget, I think we have a couple more, another speaker who has raised his hand.
Yes. Go ahead, George. George, go ahead. You're unmuted, you can speak. George, can you hear us? There's no last names though, and there's only, it looks like only one George, so I don't hear him. Oh, his hand went down.
Does anyone else wish to speak out that didn't have a chance in the room or online? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Chair Gossett. Matthew Chidister, City Manager. Going back to, we don't need to go back to the previous slide, but in the presentation, there was a discussion about request number six from the previous meeting. And I think the content of that request was covered really well by staff, but one of the commissioners requested that we make an adjustment to the language in the staff report, and I'm going to do that verbally here. So this is on page 15 of the staff report in request number six, and this is related to the incorrect statements within the EIR and FEIR related to the requirement for a use permit for this project. In the staff report, the statement says that Commissioner Joanna identified an error in both the draft and final EIRs. That statement, to clarify, Commissioner Joanna did not identify the error. Instead, she sought clarification from staff on whether the project proponent for the Hyatt project would be required to obtain a use permit and requested staff to explain if they believe that the information in the DEIR and FEIR are correct. So the commissioner did not identify the issues within those documents, but asked questions that ultimately led to staff identifying those issues. And of course, that's been clarified tonight. There was a problem with both those documents, those have been clarified within Arada, and a use permit is not required for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. So we are going to go into clarifying questions and I will ask Commissioner Gorn to go first, followed by Commissioner Ruddick, Commissioner Hernandez, and then Commissioner Joanna, and then I will go last.
Thank you. So are we in clarifying questions or can we just talk about the project since?
Well, there might be some questions since new information came, so if you have any questions. You have none? Okay.
I have one for staff. Regarding the, the language under SEQA about the unavoidable impact, AES-3, what is the, how do we get to the language of degrading the, the public view? Does this defined as anytime you have a, an empty field and a building is built upon it, does that degrade? Or is it some particular aspect of this project?
Well, that's, that's always the question. As I've put it over the last 30 years, you know, one person's, you know, dream home is somebody else's nightmare. Aesthetics is always one of the toughest impact areas in SEQA because you don't have numbers. It's to a certain extent, subject to opinion. You do try to make it as objective as you can with visual simulations, with comparisons to other existing structures. And I think in this case, because Highway One does have some special protections as the town boulevard, so, and we've brought single-family homes that front on to Highway One here to the Planning Commission, which normally we wouldn't for a house. And, and so it is something we take seriously. And, but again, if you sort of go to the extremes, you know, if we never approved anything, well, we'd, you know, we'd get sued out of existence. We'd be buying a lot of property. If we approved everything, many of us would probably be looking for new jobs. And so we're looking for that sort of meeting point where you can say, in this case, for example, we started out with a project based on comments about the aesthetics, the size has been reduced, the design has been substantially changed. That, that plays into that calculus of how you figure out, is it significant or not? I would say, in my opinion, just my opinion, taking the approach that it was a significant impact, and in this case unavoidable, was a pretty conservative position. Many other people might have had a different opinion. This was more defendable. It was a conservative, safe position. That's why we did it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Garrison. I know you're the SEQA expert, but do I take your, your close there, do I understand when you talk about it being conservative, that it would also be reasonable to have language other than degrade, that, that some people might have chosen something less straight than that?
Maybe I can jump in here. The, as Doug was referring to, there's, there's certain, certain questions under the SEQA initial study. There's a checklist that any project goes through and you have to say, yes, possibly it has an impact here, no, it definitely doesn't, or it does. And so this was not language that any one of us necessarily would have chosen, but the, the actual question in the SEQA checklist is whether a project substantially degrades the existing visual character or quality of the site and its surroundings. So that's the question that SEQA is asking that you answer. So I don't think anyone would have chosen to suggest that this project, you know, degrades anything in, if there were other descriptors available.
And, and does SEQA leave it open at what can be the degrading factor? Like it might be ugliness of the, the color and ugliness of the building, or the height, or some other aspect? Is that totally open?
I think SEQA tries to avoid terms like ugly. It's generally couched in terms of how big of a change is it from the existing conditions? Is it, how visible is it? How does it compare to other projects in the area? They're looking for a way to, like I said, make comparisons and balance it. You're generally coached to avoid terms like ugly when you're doing SEQA.
Can I just follow up on that? So, so we're, we're not saying it's ugly, but you clearly made a determination that it substantially degrades the visual character. That was the outcome of the environmental impact analysis in the report that we see before us. Talk to me about some of the details that you're specifically citing. You're not calling it ugly, but what, what is the specific impact that you look at? And is it, you know, just walk us through it. Because I think it's, it's the big topic, so let's get into it.
Pointing at each other here. I think much of what characterizes Half Moon Bay to a, to a certain extent are agricultural fields, that sort of thing. And so you could argue that building a house on it would change that rural. And so you could argue that building a house on it would change that rural characteristic of it. This is bigger than most houses, so it's not unreasonable to say that it would tip things over into significant impact, substantial change in the character of that five-acre lot. And again, we're not saying that it's ugly. We're saying it's a substantial change from the existing conditions. That's what SEQA asks you to do, is what's there today, or when you prepared your notice of preparation for the EIR, and how will this project change that baseline? And so a lot of, if you go through our LUP, there, there is language that talks about the rural character and agricultural fields, this would be a change. I think the size of it sort of tilts it towards significant. Also, it will affect some views of the hillsides to the east. And again, this is not nitpicking through the, the land use plan policies yet. This is from a SEQA perspective. How much does it change that view? And that's, I think what we're looking at is what's there today as you're driving up or down the highway? What is the change? And I think the term came up in the last meeting, and also came up as we discussed in those other projects that were approved by the Planning Commission a few years ago, that the, the commission consistently made a distinction between fleeting glimpses or over-your-shoulder versus a long straightway coming up the highway where it's, it's in front of you for a substantial period of time. And again, it's difficult to quantify that and say it's yes, no, but it all gets thrown into the mix.
So going back to SEQA, not, not looking at LCP, but staying with the SEQA topic, we have this feature of SEQA, which says if there is an impact that can't be mitigated, the feature is to have this overriding consideration, the statement that we're supposed to put together. And this is, this is just part of the law, right? It's not something that's been invented. And have we done this in other projects in Half Moon Bay?
I don't know when or if we did in Half Moon Bay, but it's a common aspect of SEQA. I've worked in other places where we, we went through this exercise.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Joanna? Turn your, turn your mic.
Thank you. Are we just sticking with the visual resources right now? Or can we just talk about anything else? Okay. Okay. So I want to go back to the TDM, and I want to understand better how the 15% decrease was calculated. Because I looked at Exhibit H, and I didn't quite follow how the 15% was arrived, or 15% reduction was arrived at. Because there were several different types of TDM measures that were brought into place. One of them was, you know, having a reduction in parking fees, reduction in hotel rates, providing parking incentives for employees. There were several different things that were discussed. So I didn't know how you assess that those elements would amount to a 15% reduction.
Have I now, oh, there we go. So you'll have to give me a minute, I'll, I'll pull up that appendix and look through. But the, the short answer is that it is the collective of all of the TDM measures that were identified in the Transportation Impact Analysis that collectively would total, if they were all implemented, would achieve that mandated 15% reduction.
I grasped that, but how did it amount to that? How was that calculation done? I mean, it has to have some kind of, let's just say, a, is it a matrix that is assigned a certain value? I, I, I'd like to understand the matrix that was used and how it was calculated. You know, it seems like 15% is a calculation, and I'm, and I'm not understanding 15% of what is the first thing, and then how it was calculated. It's a mathematical thing, I'm assuming.
Well, I would add that this was in the scope of work for the transportation, traffic expert that was hired as a subconsultant for the EIR consultant. And these are generally items that you get from the state of California in dealing with VMT, from the regional transportation organizations. There's a laundry list, and they assign some number to this activity. I think what's important to keep in mind here is that this VMT plan is a living document. The condition of approval, the mitigation measure, says that it shall be updated from time to time to make sure it's working, achieving its goals. And as technology changes, as understanding improves over how to calculate these things, it will be required to be updated. And that's really what everybody in the state is doing right now, because it's a fairly new impact that we have to deal with. And there's not a lot of guidance from the state on how to do it. The best you can do is say, this is a living document, and we will ensure that we get the 15% over time, one way or the other.
And the conditions of approval are written to ensure that the city has an opportunity to review the TDM proposal and the measures that are proposed to achieve that reduction. The CCAG also requires the submittal of the proposed TDM program to them for review and acceptance. And so the, the different features that go into that will be reviewed by those two bodies. And it, to some degree, it is up to the applicant to decide which of the features he wants to incorporate into his, his TDM plan, as long as they add up to that 15% reduction. And the reduction, because the city of Half Moon Bay does not have a, a threshold for SEQA, well, I'll take one step back. Many jurisdictions have established VMT thresholds. And they'll say, if a project, if a residential project, you know, has VMT under this number, we consider it less insignificant. If a commercial project has VMT generated under a certain number, we consider that less insignificant. So those are their significance thresholds. Half Moon Bay does not have VMT thresholds of significance established. So what, what Half Moon Bay does, which some jurisdictions still do this, so it's not totally unusual, is that they say, we'll calculate the unmitigated VMT, and then you, applicant, need to demonstrate how you will, what measures you will take to make sure that your project, at the end of the day, achieves a VMT of 15% less than that unmitigated number. So that's what is, that's what is happening here.
So the unmitigated number is calculated based on that state average or whatever that state is, because we don't have a threshold, it's...
Well, the unmitigated VMT number is, was calculated on this specific project.
And I guess I missed that, because that's what I was looking for, is that, that, that number, so.
Yeah, that's in the Appendix H.
Can I follow up on that question? So, so one of the points raised by Mr. Shore in the comments, it called into question the assumption of visitors who were coming from out of town, and that they would all be coming from the airport. Why was that used? Because it's like, it seems like it's all local trips, or people coming from the San Francisco Airport, sort of the two biggest bodies of travelers. How did we land on that as a standard?
I was involved with that early stage of the project before I bowed out. And one of the problems with calculating vehicle miles traveled is you need to figure out what are the average trip lengths? And some traffic consultant said, well, just use your city boundary. And we said, well, nobody in Half, well, very few people in Half Moon Bay are driving here to stay in a hotel. And I spent hours and hours sitting through seminars with the State Office of Planning Research, and there was no guidance on destination, hotels, rural agricultural areas, and they admit that. And so we, basically, I mean, and a big part of SEQA is you have to show your work, and that's what we did, was we said, okay, let's look at, you know, we can't say, you know, if somebody drove here from Kansas, we can't say that's an average trip. But we could say, a lot of people probably come through the Bay Area airports, San Francisco or San Jose. And I don't exactly, I don't remember the exact number, but I believe we took an average based on the distance to major airports, which overstated what some of the traffic engineers were telling us to use, which was a shorter trip. So it was a conservative approach, and so you take the average trip length, and then you factor in the number of cars, and that's how you come up with the, the total number of vehicle miles traveled. So that's, that was the origin of it.
And, and the, regardless of, if you've got 20% of the trips are coming from the airport, and 80% of the trips are coming from some local jurisdiction, the 15% reductions based off of whatever that unmitigated baseline is?
Correct.
Okay. So, so as this evolves over time, and we get better information, maybe we change some of the assumptions. You're still trying to get below that 15% threshold, stay below that 15% threshold?
Yes.
Okay, great. There was one other comment that was, that came in, and I'm 99.9% sure this is addressed in the EIR, but Mr. Jules Soffer raised a question about runoff going into Seymour Ditch. And it's my understanding that the water is largely going to be retained on-site, and there should be minimal impact to, to drainage to Seymour. Is that an accurate statement?
That is accurate. I think the evidence is half of this property is covered in wetlands, because the water has nowhere to go. The way the project was designed, I remember going through these discussions with the engineers, was that it was designed to not interfere with the stormwater, the sheet flow coming off of the city streets. And it would flow across the property to the lower points where it stops by the Highway One, because you've got that huge berm, which is the highway. So the water would continue to feed through a little more complicated process to where the wetlands are. The water coming off the parking lots, we do have some requirements, because they, they pick up contaminations in parking lots, so it, it does go through bioswales and a little bit of cleaning. But the, the ultimate goal is to keep essentially the same amount of water going to the wetlands as was going there without the project.
I don't have any other questions.
Yeah, I have a couple of other questions. It's regarding that property. I think this, something about the property being used in the past as a agricultural land, and which prompted me to think about the prime soils issue. And I think it's in LUP, page 4-10. And in it, it talks about requiring mitigation for conversion of prime and non-prime agricultural lands for both inside and outside of the town center through methods such as establishing new agricultural conservation easements, or INLU fees. Can you explain a little bit whether this project will provide INLU fees, and how much that amounts to? And what will those fees be used towards?
It, it will. That was covered in the last Planning Commission meeting. There was an agricultural expert who worked, I believe, directly for the applicant to calculate, well, to go through a, a study of what the feasibility of that site was for agriculture, and came up with a number for what the value for the lost acres of those soils, even though the site itself had minimal usefulness or feasibility as an ongoing agricultural site. And the number, I, I think Greg put it out in the, the record in the last meeting, it was $30,000 or something like that. But it's, I believe there's a condition of approval in the resolution that confirms that that's being done.
I would like to follow up on that, this, this discussion. Is that a reasonable amount to, you know, because as I understand with that policy, if you take an acre of prime ag soil out of production, whether or not it is in production right now, it is considered prime agricultural soil, is, is $38,000 going to be able to buy a conservation easement for 2.55 acres of prime ag soil?
I'm not an expert on agricultural land values. That's why they hired an expert to do that, an independent expert. I would say, I would also make a distinction. The Coastal Commission has its own definition of prime ag soils, which is different than the rest of the country. And it is, in some ways, I think, a little bit simpler to make the case that it's not feasible to farm it, even though, under Coastal Commission definitions, these are prime ag soils, whereas under state and federal law, we would say, is it prime farmland? Which factors in a bunch of other issues, like, is it feasible to grow things there? So I would, I would defer to the agricultural experts' testimony on that, and the applicant may have a little more knowledge than I do.
And I have a different question altogether, again, now for something new. Regarding the DOT, in the land use plan, again, on, on page 536, it said, it, it made a reference to the city having had, having needed to have done a financial analysis. And I guess that came up with the RV, Surf Beach and Dunes Beach. And they also mentioned the Elsie Smith Estate. And, and it mentioned that, it, it says, pending further economic and other studies, it is unclear if this much additional lodging will be needed over the course of the planning horizon, or for, if the city's infrastructure can support this level of intensification. So the question I have is, since the time this land use plan was approved and written, has the city conducted an economic study to warrant, you know, additional rooms?
Well, at this point, I would say the Surf, Dunes Beach application is, as far as I know, it's been withdrawn. So that would not be part of the analysis.
So is there an, an economic analysis for this project?
I don't know.
Yeah, I was also wondering about that, too, about whether or not an economic analysis that looked at maybe the market demand, the cost of, of, of operating costs, revenue projections, competition, the impact on competition, the economic climate, the regulatory climate, and the community impact. Those are things that should be considered when there's an economic analysis done. And I was also wondering if that was completed. And I guess you're saying it was not? Or you just don't know?
I'm saying I don't know. I was not involved in that.
All right, thank you. Kristy, do you know?
No, I was just reading the language that the commissioner was referring to, and I didn't see where it said that that economic study needed or was required. didn't see where it said that that economic study needed or was required to be completed. I see where it says, pending further economic and other studies, it is unclear if this much additional lodging. I think, I guess I was reading that sentence to say, unless someone were to do other economic studies, you know, it's hard to answer this question. But I don't think it says that one is required to be done as part of the LUP update.
Oh, I wasn't mentioning, I wasn't suggesting that it was supposed to be done as part of the LUP update. I just was asking if one was done because the statement was made. I don't think this, I didn't think that this question surrounded the fact that the LUP update required an economic study. I just was referring to the hotel rooms that were necessary, that were requested. So, so if, if one isn't done, that's all my question is, anyway.
Is there a specific LC, LUP policy that you're worried is not, we're not in conformance with?
I didn't see an LC, LUP policy. I was just reading, you know, the, the preambles to all of these questions. So I just wanted to understand, because one of the statements of overriding conditions talks about TOT and talks about all of these things. So I'm just trying to resolve in my mind how I would go about, you know, justifying an overriding consideration.
And, and the balance, I think, I think in one of the benefits, it's called Benefit E, it talks about the economic impact to the community as a benefit. And to really understand that, and, and to say that, I, I would like to know, too, because I don't know if, if the benefit of E is actually a valid benefit, if we haven't done an economic analysis. Because to say that we're going to increase TOT when we don't understand the impact to the other hotels doesn't, isn't, to me, an economic analysis. It just wasn't studied. So that's why I was wondering about that, too.
Well, I would suggest, we've heard from the Coastside Chamber, they have data, they've looked at the need for hotel rooms. The applicant paid for a pretty extensive feasibility study for this project to see if there would be demand for these rooms. I think the research is there, it just may not have been prepared by the city.
I do have a follow-up question on that, regarding the information that was given to us by the chamber. On page, I think, 537 of our LUP, it stated at that time, we had 587 rooms available. Today, I think I heard 586. The chamber is saying that there are 530 rooms. So that's a difference of 57 rooms. But that also includes the conversion of the coast side into the coast side, you know, the transitional housing. And I think that had, what, 52 rooms that were taken and used for the transition? So now we're only five, five short. But then I also hear that, I don't know if the beach house is really a hotel, or is it a fractional ownership or timeshare? So how is that TOT or occupancy handed into, fit into this? So that's the other confusing thing that I had in my, my mind.
There was, today, they submitted an email to Bridget that broke down which hotels were actually advertising rooms, which had been converted. It came in too late for us to address in the report. I believe that was forwarded to the commissioners. Is that correct?
Kristalyn just forwarded it as a bit of information. She had stated that information in the last meeting, and just wanted to make sure we had it in writing. But I did include it to the commission.
Yeah, Brid, I have the copy from Bridget.
Yeah, and that's actually what I'm quoting in my comments with my mathematics here.
I need to go back to the zoning, because I asked a question about the zoning map. And before I go into my question, I was going to ask Kristi to go to Appendix A and pull up table A1.
Appendix A of the...
Of the LCLUP, and it's called Zoning Map Amendments.
Sure, I'm working on it.
Thank you.
My technology is failing me here, but go ahead and ask your question, and I'll try to get it here.
I, I would like the public to be able to see the table, so I'll, I'll wait. I, I think there's a benefit to the public's being able to see what I'm talking about.
You said table?
Table A1. It's called Zoning Map Amendments.
Yeah, can we just take a break?
I think we're going to take a five-minute recess.
It's weird. Can you go get, can you go get Dieter back there? He's in his little cave.
So I think we now have the table up that I wanted to ask questions about. Yeah, it, it's there. So this is a table from Appendix A that shows zoning map amendments. And for the Smith property, it does say CG. You could see at the top. But what I was interested in, Kristi, and maybe you could help me understand this, is that the zoning that's listed at the top of the table indicates anticipated zoning, which is CG. And in the staff report last time, you indicated that it was PUD, and when I looked at the zoning map, it still indicated PUD. So what I want to know is if an ordinance had been adopted to change the zoning, and was there a map update?
That has not occurred yet. As the LUP makes clear, there can be some lag time between when you certify the LUP and you update your zoning code to make it conform. And the Coastal Commission, they actually brought this up to us to include some language that when there were conflicting policies or inconsistencies, that it was the newly certified LUP that overrules the zoning, in particular the zoning maps. That's why in Appendix A, on the project, the properties that we knew were going to be updated in the zoning code, they spelled them right out.
Okay, I guess I'm just still a little confused by that, Doug. I, I understand that the IP is going to be updated in the future, but in this table, it calls the zoning, it, it says anticipated zoning, not current zoning. And so in terms of our procedures and our zoning code for rezoning, we're supposed to, as I understand, introduce an ordinance and have public participation, and then update, I guess, maybe the LCLUP so that we have the correct zoning. Because as I understand, today, it is zone PUD.
However, the LUP overrides that zoning designation. It's not real. It's not applicable to this project.
I don't understand why.
That's what the Coastal Commission decided.
Okay.
I think the, I brought the same thing up on the 555 Kelly project, which was the concern that zoning had been changed for 555 Kelly as part of the project. And it was actually not part of the project, it was as part of the LCP update that we did. That was, and it's the same thing is true for 880 Stone Pine, which we're talking about on Thursday. This is, this is an ongoing conversation, though. I mean, I think it's...
Okay, well, I, I'm not done with my whole thought, so I appreciate your input. So what I would like you to do, Kristi, can you go to page 210 of the LCLUP for Commercial So here, if, if our, this is our land use designation, as I understand it, and it indicates that we would have 32, 30 units per acre. And based on the project brought forward, we have 2.55 buildable acres, because we have a lot line adjustment, and we have 2.02 acres of wetland. So that amounts to 76 rooms. I wanted to know how this project complies with this land use designation.
That references to residential units, not hotel units.
This is for Commercial General. It says visitor-serving facilities. It, although it might not say hotel, it does say visitor-serving facilities. This is not residential, this is a Commercial General. Residential has a different type of, of land use designation, as I thought.
If you read the entire paragraph, it says that residential development will comply with the residential high-density standards. And it goes on to say that in Commercial General, typically residential would be on the second story or above of mixed-use buildings. The reference to the density of development is for residential units, not hotel rooms.
So then, this 30 units per acre doesn't apply to any of the other, like, you could build an office building with 1,000 units. You could have a retail strip mall with 1,000 units. Are you saying that 30 units per buildable acre doesn't apply to Commercial General land use designation? I, I want to know, and maybe legally, can you answer that question?
Yes, I can say that in this context, the reference to units per acre refers to residential units. So my understanding, and the planners, I think, could speak to this, but when we're talking about commercial development, there's not the same standard of units per acre that is a standard that applies to residential development.
Okay, thank you. I do have more questions about, in the staff report, you went, it was stated that standards for Commercial General were being applied from the 1996 LCLUP. And it's not an LCLUP, it was the 1996 LP. And the question I have, and I think it's a legal question, I'm trying to pull it up. So can you tell me what could happen if the zoning from the 1996 LUP and the new certified LCLUP is inconsistent? And the stated zoning wasn't created through an ordinance as required by zoning code? And could this create legal and procedural complications?
The, first, could you, could you point me to the page of the document you're looking for, just so that we're all looking at the same page?
So, in, in the staff report, it, it was stated that the standards for, someone else could find it, because I'm, I'm, this is my thought, so you're going to have to answer the question. The standards for Commercial General that were used for this project came from the 1996 LUP. But yet we have now a certified LCLUP. So the question I have, and it's very legal, is can you tell me what happens if the zoning, because the zoning in the 1996 LUP is PUD. And our new certified LCLUP states CG, and it's inconsistent, but yet we are using standards from a 1996 LUP. And so my question is, can this create legal and procedural complications if there is a conflict in, in the zoning code between the two, two documents? One is a, that was used, it's an outdated document, and now we have a certified document.
So I'm not, I'm not positive, but I think she's talking about chapter 1837, Visual Resource Protections, Protection Standards E, is that right? Allow development only when it's visually compatible with the character of the surrounding area, 1996 zoning code part? Is that accurate?
Did you find that in the staff report? Okay, what, yeah, what page was that? Because I have the staff report in front of me, but I didn't, I didn't mark that. It was just in, it's in my head, so these pages aren't labeled.
There cannot be one.
Is this the staff memo for this meeting, or for the prior meeting?
For this meeting. Yeah, I, I just have a copy of it in front of me, so I, I...
Yeah, it's in, when you go online and you hit the staff, the PDF, it gives you all of the pages in total. So that's, that's where it's looking. I've searched for 1996 in the memo, and I'm not seeing that year come up, so I think maybe it's an attachment. But what I will say, and I think this is, the planners could speak to this, and I know there's something specific that you're seeing on the page, but it was my understanding that it's the, the city's current LCLUP that governs, that sets the land use designations that apply to the city, and the policies that are currently operative. And I, it sounds like you're, there's something in the document that's inconsistent with what I'm just saying, but it's my understanding that, that the city's current LCLUP applies to this parcel as it does to all parcels in the city.
Yes, our staff report states that the standards for Commercial General that we're applying to this project are from the 1996 LUP.
All I can say is it's not in the staff report that was prepared for tonight. It may be in one of the attachments to the staff report, but without some specific references to what we're looking for, I, I don't know what to say. Some of this may be if, if Bridget sent you a single PDF of the whole document. When you go to the city's website, each, the report and each attachment have to be downloaded separately, and there is no page 200 and whatever.
Page numbers with the packet, so if they can provide me the page number, then I can provide stuff. But I don't know what page number they're looking at through the packet.
But I don't know what page number they're looking at through the packet.
I understand that the current LCLUP prevails in terms of zoning. If, if I, well, I don't want to say I understand that, but I, I'm just trying to understand what to do when there's a conflict, because I found it in the staff, I can't, I'll have to look for it and find it. I should have marked it. I actually found it too, so this is in, it's, it's, oh, I see, what's?
I think that's something in the, in public comments.
I don't think I saw it in public comment. I, I thought it was in our staff report.
I have the staff report up on the screen, the full memo and all of the attachments. If you do a search for 1996, and nothing comes up.
Nothing comes up, okay.
1993, maybe.
Maybe it was 1993.
Are you talking about the attachment that Bridget sent us for the LC Smith document? Because I think that references that version of the zoning.
There is a reference in the staff report. It's under Request 6, provide clarity on whether a use permit would be needed. And what it states is that a use permit is not required based in part on, where it says, "No use permit will be required for the hotel because Alternative 2 provides more ESHA protection and public access than would be required under the LC Smith PD standards established in the previous 1993 LUP." And we are not suggesting that we're using the 1993 LUP because it doesn't exist anymore. This is saying that the reason why Alternative 2 or Modified 2 work is, one of the reasons why we can go to the Commercial General zoning and LUP standards is because the, the project we're looking at right now, specifically Alternative 2, accomplishes those two goals, which are spelled out in the LUP and in various Coastal Commission documents.
So just want to make sure it's Modified Alternative 2, not Alternative.
That would apply to either one. The one we're looking at tonight-
Is Modified.
Modified, but the statement would be true for either one. If you look at what I sent you for the LC Smith, I think there was a setback from essentially where the, the entranceway on Main Street is now. They had to be thirty feet away from it. This one's 400 feet away. The setback from the highway was 30 feet. In this case, it's 190 to 140 feet. So the statement was, even if, even if we used that PUD, they could build a bigger project than what they're building now. There's no, there's no protection from going backwards.
And that's probably what confused me. Now I found the, the sentence, Doug, that it said additionally, as discussed on October 9th, the 2024 staff report and the EIR, the previous LUP establishes the, the standards, the CG standards. But I was just trying to, you know, clarify in my head if, what the legal and procedural complications could be if the zoning is in conflict? Because in, in that LCLUP, LUP, the zoning is PUD.
If I, through the chair, if I understand your question, it's, it, it seems like the zoning today is what it is. It's, it's not a question of reverting to old zoning, if that's what you're worried about.
Okay, well, and I, I still haven't been able to wrap my head around that, and it could be that I'm just not understanding if a property changes zoning from PUD to CG, is an ordinance required to be adopted? And then a map amendment goes along with that? I, I thought that was the procedure to rezone a property. So that's just what I'm trying to understand, because as I, when I read that table that we had up earlier, the Appendix A calls the Smith property, and, you know, a CG is considered anticipated zoning. So I just, I haven't heard anything that helps me to understand that the CG zoning is current, because we didn't go through the procedure to rezone.
If I'm, if I may, Chair Gossit. It's correct that the zoning for this site has not been updated to CG. An ordinance hasn't been adopted to update the city's zoning map and the, any related provisions of the zoning code. So that is still pending. That is something that will happen in the future. But the LCLUP provides that. As Doug explained, there can be a lag between the update to the, the land use designations in the LUP and an update to the zoning code. And so after the LCLUP is certified by the Coastal Commission, it's the land use designation and the, essentially the prospective zoning that's identified in that document, that control. So they trump what's in the zoning code.
So why isn't it called current zoning? It's called anticipated zoning. And that's what I, you know, to me, the language is clear. Anticipated zoning versus current zoning, that's where I'm sort of very confused.
I'll say it's anticipated because that formal update to the zoning map has not yet happened. And so the LCLUP lays out next steps that the city will have to undertake to update its zoning code. But pending that formal update to the zoning code, it has a policy that says it's the land use designation and the corresponding prospective zoning code designation that prevail. So I think this is a quirk, maybe, of-
Where's that policy that you're referring to that says that?
Yeah, it's Policy 1-2, I believe.
I found it.
Okay. And I'll, I'll say, when you look at the plain language of the policy, it's not as clear. You know, what we're describing here is sort of like the clarified explanation of what this says, but it's admittedly not as clear for making the specific language.
It definitely is not clear. And to me, yeah, so thank you for pointing that out to me, but it didn't clarify in my mind that the zoning has actually occurred. I mean, but-
The actual rezoning has not yet happened. It's, but it's that, the, the land use designation and the, and I, yeah. It hasn't yet happened, but it will.
So I have a follow-up question. If the land use plan applies and, and trumps the existing zoning code, why do we need another ordinance to do this new zoning code? If we already know this exists? What is, why is it necessary to go to that legal action if it's already noted in here?
Well, if I may, one thing to consider is that when we update our zoning code, it's not just about this project. It will cover, for example, we, one of the reasons why we haven't been able to do it is we're still waiting to get our housing element, general plan, our housing element certified by a different state agency, Housing Community Development. And that may require some changes to the LCP, depending on what they, you know, concerning Measure A, things like that. There are, we're, we're taking some land use plan designations from the old LUP and just saying, they don't exist anymore. We're creating a new, like the Rural Coastal LUP designation. There is no zoning designation that applies to that. So it's, it's a major undertaking. The simplest part is really what we're talking about tonight, where we've identified specific properties that will be, the zoning map will be changed to Commercial General or Residential or whatever it may be. That's probably the simpler part of this. Other parts, we're going to have to come up with all-new development regulations for new zoning districts that have not existed previously.
Okay, so maybe we're opening up things that we shouldn't be opening up. But you just mentioned the housing element, which is part of the general plan. We have a land use plan that already tells us what our land use designations are. Are we now suggesting or saying, or am I misunderstanding, that whatever the HCD tells us we should do, we need to reestablish our land use plan to have new designations to accommodate new housing?
Well, I will say this, the land use plan is part of the general plan. It's one element in the general plan, just like the housing element is. And you generally want consistency between all of the elements. We don't know where HCD is going to come down on our housing element. I'm just saying that if they come up with some required changes and they don't work it out with the Coastal Commission, you know, it's kind of an open question on some of these issues.
So, so the project north of Seymour, then, right now is Zone R2. The HCD could come back and say, no, we, we think that that needs to be an R3, and it has to be high-density, because that's how you're going to meet your RANA numbers. I mean, I mean, that's what I'm hearing might happen. So all these things have, all these elements of the general plan need to marry up. And, 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 you know, it could possibly happen. So the, the portion of the Seymour, north of Seymour on this project might be something that we can't speak to at this point in time. Is that correct?
That would be one way to look at it. I haven't been very deeply involved with the housing element. I don't think that's on the table. One other way to look at this is, this is a way to lock in a lower-density residential development if you want it. But that's speculative at this point.
Yeah, I would think it would be speculative, because, you know, the owner of the land, of any land, you know, not generally this one, could sell the property, and it could be sold to an entity that would like to develop, you know, apartment buildings, high-density apartment buildings. They can use the density bonus law. They can use the infill lot law. And so this then becomes something that we need to be cognizant of at this point in time. So again, the Se, the North Seymour property is something that we need to think about as we talk about this project as a whole. And one point with the housing element plan, I did look into the pipeline projects in our housing element and with, in, in this property, the Seymour, north of Seymour, is listed as four very low-income, four low-income, and 12 moderate, for a total of 20. And the anticipated completion date was 2026. So given the fact that in this entire project, the housing portion lacks commitment, I wanted to know how that impacts the housing element with this project.
Well, one scenario is if you severed the parcel map from this, all of that could happen on one large lot. A developer, a developer could show up and say, I want an infill density bonus project with 10%, 15% affordable below market, and we know where that goes.
Chair, I could also maybe add to that. So, because I heard that an overall question of how would that affect the housing element that the HCD is looking at? I, I think the answer is it would. I don't believe it would affect the housing element. And I've heard some questions about would housing, would the HCD mandate some changes on that site? And I don't believe that would be the case either. What HCD would typically say is, if we were short in something, they'd say, go find it and bring it back to us. I think that's gone through some iterations. And lastly, I would say that all these things are, I think we use the word speculative. I'm not sure if that's it, but it's planning, so you're planning, and planning is pretty flexible until things get built and go through a process like this. So HCD understands that as well. So all those opportunity sites that are listed, including this site with certain levels of affordability, aren't necessarily that they have to happen. It was just at the time that the, that these things are proposed, it's what I think staff felt was a potential scenario of many scenarios. So I hope that helps clarify your question.
I think this project was listed as a pipeline project, and I think in one of the topical responses to this, in the FEIR, it was discussed as a pipeline project. It was, it is listed as a pipeline project.
So that, that's still okay. It doesn't mean that they're, it's mandatorily going to be constructed as described at the time it was submitted.
So I, I'd like to kind of build on this a little bit and maybe clarify. So we've done a SEQA analysis, because we have development, foreseeable development with three projects in the area. So we're not sidestepping SEQA at all. We're, we're imagining that something's going to happen. But the project before us today, with respect to the housing, all we're doing is subdividing the, we're changing the lot definition, right? So that, then that's considered development. And are we also then declaring that the zoning for this area is CG as part of the project?
No, that, that part would remain R2.
Okay, because it's, because it's still R2, and it was never envisioned as being CG.
It's R2 existing, and there's no proposed change in the LUP or in the project.
But the remainder of the LC Smith lot, which is the undeveloped former PUD that we're talking about, that will be changed to CG as part of this process? It won't. It's just we're applying the CG standard to the project because of Policy 1-2.
So are you referring to the hotel site?
Yes, now I'm back to the hotel.
That would be rezoned with or without this project being approved? That's addressed in the, the LUP. There was some language in there that said that there were a number of reasons why Commercial General was more appropriate than PD. And they noted that the Commercial General change would occur whether this project was approved or not. The, the project is not driving, you know, the wagon on this one.
And rezoned at some point in the future, not as part of the action the Planning Commission's considering this evening.
But given the preamble in the appendix and the preamble in Section 1 of our LCP, But given the preamble in the appendix and the preamble in Section 1 of our LCP, we're able to move forward because of Policy 1.2 that explicitly says when there's a conflict, the LCP overrules because it anticipates that the LC Smith lot is going to be CG and wherever these houses are, they're going to remain R2. And so we're, we're sticking, and we're not implementing new zoning rules. We're just applying the current zoning standards that are applicable for CG unless there's some new policy conflict that arises because of the new LCP.
That's correct. And I would note, under the current CG zoning standards, you could build a lot more than this potentially. Just going by the, there, there is no maximum floor area or lot coverage. It does establish some setbacks, but certainly not what's being proposed here. So at this point, it would, it's much less than what you could apply for even under the current zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair. Could we get into discussion because it's about 8:30 and we have a couple of things that actually are, I think, very important and that
Sure.
I don't want to stay till 11:30 again and make bad decisions.
Okay.
Can, can, I don't, if that's okay with you.
I, I'm okay with that.
So as a point of discussion, I would say my, my personal opinion is that this is a beautiful project. This is a, it's a really nice looking hotel in a place where a hotel would be good where, and the TOT is not insignificant. Like I see the benefit to, to us, like personally, I see that. You know, I, this 3,965 daily VMT tri, you know, miles traveled thing, somehow cutting down to 3,354 is like, I just don't believe that's happening. And I don't, I, you know, but, but those, those other benefits of having that project in, you know, I could look, overlook the, the VMT thing, I could overlook the parking variance, this lot line adjustment, this parcel division, this approving a project with housing, with a housing component that's not actually part of the project, but is part of the approval, okay, I, you know, maybe. But, so, but the, to me, there's two things that stand out that are not personal opinion that are, that we have to deal with as facts. And those are the two big problems with this project. And one of them is the view. And where the view is, you know, how that view meets LCP standards. And I don't see LCLUP, I, I see so many spots where it's a problem, where it's like, where I wouldn't want to overrule that. I think if I was on city council and I was trying to make a decision about, you know, policy, then maybe I would, you know, somehow overlook that. But as a planning commissioner, and what we're supposed to look at is the LCLUP, I think that is pretty, pretty serious. So the other thing that I think is pretty serious is this, this Sequa having an unavoidable environmental risk and that we're going to approve it because of the statement of overriding considerations. There's something I, like I never heard of that before. Like I, I, at the last planning commission meeting at the, in the, in the staff report, I had no idea what that was. And so I looked around, since we got a little extra time, looked around at who else uses that and when they use it. And it has been used now more and more and more often because it is part of Sequa. And so I looked at, like the, the one that's to me, like most, I don't know, revealing, I guess, is that Burlingame did this when they wanted to build this low income housing project on Ogden Drive. And they put out, you know, but it had some kind of historical significance, this parcel. So they put out this long, like reasoning for why this would benefit the city, how many ways it would benefit the city. And it goes on and on about, you know, how it meets city standards, how it meets what the city is trying to do, how it meets affordable housing issues, public plaza, cultural arts space, goes on and on and on. So when I look at ours, oh, and then let's also just like, okay, the Sequa thing itself. We heard a lot about how Sequa, it's part of Sequa and that we really, you know, it's like built into Sequa. But what it says in Sequa is the statement of overriding considerations shall be supported by substantial evidence in the record. So we have six things that were substantial evidence in the record. And one of them is it's a hotel and it serves visitors. So, okay, it does. And then the other one is it has a bike path and a pedestrian path, which, you know, a lot of that area is like required to be set aside because it's all wetland. And I'm not really buying that that's like a great benefit, like worth overriding considerations that we want a bike path there. A bike path basically to nowhere because it doesn't actually meet up with anything. And then there's C is it intends to have some affordable housing. It's like, okay, it wants to have affordable housing. It means to have affordable housing, but it doesn't actually have affordable housing. And so that's, to me, not really a great argument. And then the fourth one is the TOT, very important, right? We need the cash. The fifth one is that it supports the business environment, which it, it does. And then F is that it anchors the Main Street corridor, which, you know, brings you back to that view thing. So really, it's a hotel serving visitors, the TOT and supporting business. That's really what the overriding considerations are, those three things. Those are really important. But that's just, that's, that's money. That's policy. That's like city council policy. That's not like the statement of overriding considerations shall be supported by substantial evidence in the record. There isn't even substantial evidence that, I mean, you know, intuitively, yes, TOT will go up, but I haven't seen the evidence and it's not written out. And there's nothing here that's, that sort of goes in that direction other than six very short paragraphs that we can throw out some and keep others and add to it if we want. But to me, the statement of overriding considerations is like a, like they're making it really clear in Sequa that it has to be really important, you know? Like cultural arts space, public plaza, affordable housing, those things are like really important to the city. Money is also important. I get that. And if I'm on city council, maybe I would say money's more important than, than the LCLUP or the, or Sequa. Maybe I would. But right now, I think those are the two things that really stand out. We're also going to talk about that, that view corridor again. Like I thought about it a little bit more. And we're all talking about Highway 1, the view from Highway 1, the view from Highway 1, and that's because of Caltrans right of way, right? Because that's, it's all Caltrans right of way.
No, there's, there's two issues. There's a Sequa impact of view and then there's the LCLUP impact of view.
That's, that's what I mean.
It has nothing to, but it's, it's defined. It's not about
But we're all talking about that corridor and the view from the corridor.
The Town Boulevard.
Remember the last time we talked about, oh, Highway 1, Highway 1, Highway 1. But, but Caltrans right of way includes the path. It includes the, the Naomi Patridge Trail. And so like if you look at the map from when they wanted to do the paving of Highway 1, the repaving, you see that the, that it goes all the way to Naomi Patridge Trail. You stand on Naomi Patridge Trail, it's definitely exceeds that, whatever the, what was it, 160 degree something or 130 degree? I can't remember what it was in the LUP, but it definitely exceeds that. And so I think that you have to sort of look at that.
Are you talking about the 160 foot?
The contour thing. Yeah.
Yeah.
The contour line, whatever, you know, I'm not, you know, and I'm not an expert on that stuff, but I, I would say, you know, we do know, like as I drive into Hafman Bay, I do, you know, you do get a look at the hills and you do get a sense of what Hafman Bay is about. And that would be impacted. It's definitely impacted. And like Sequa says it is. And if you want to undo Sequa, basically, if you want to like, like, and you use that clause in Sequa that says you can have a statement of overriding considerations, I think that statement of overriding considerations has to be real, has to be like really important.
I agree with you. I, I think that that's
That's, those are the two things I have like big trouble with.
Okay, Commissioner Roddick?
First of all, I, I agree with Commissioner Gorn that, that I personally find this to be a beautiful project. I think more importantly, the, the reason that the aesthetics are not being debated anymore is the, is partly due to very positive and, and helpful impact from the public and also our architectural advisory committee made up of three professional architects who have given an awful lot to the city on this project and many others over the years. At our October 9th hearing, we had a pretty robust discussion of the, of how the Planning Commission should look at the, all the policies that are relevant in the land use plan. Commissioner Gorn has mentioned some of them. I, I, I strived at that meeting to, to communicate my point of view, which is that it's, it's clear that there would be a small intrusion into the view of the ridge lines for some folks involved. The vast majority of these folks are going to be people in vehicles on Highway 1 outnumbering 100 to 1 or 1,000 to 1, the number of people who will walk on the Naomi Patridge Trail. So that's how I, that's the center of my analysis is to think of the, the vast majority of these people. And if they're in a car or a truck and they take their eyes off the road at exactly the right period of three seconds when they're due west of the north building of the hotel, they will see an intrusion into the ridge lines. I feel strongly that the other benefits to the city that, that are, that were, that are important and are enumerated in the land use plan and other policies, and you mentioned some of them, economic vitality, especially anchoring that part of Main Street, the, the input to the, the city's revenues, the setbacks from the highway that are, that are minimizing the impact on the views, that all those benefits to me outweigh the small and fleeting intrusion into the ridge line. The, the reason that, in clarifying questions, I asked Mr. Garrison about Sequa and this language about degrading the view, I, I do think that this project has evolved to be so well designed that I might have said changes the scenic values there rather than degrades it, but I understand why we have to go there. I, I think that that, that overstates it a little bit, given that today we have a, a field of invasive weeds there. The, the, as we discussed, the two, the 2019 projects at, at 555 Poplar, and I believe it's 543 Filbert, was that the right address? They obviously are, are set back much less from the hotel and cause what could be argued to be even greater intrusions into the ridge lines and in a similar fleeting way. But I think that's an important precedent. I don't see how we could disallow the hotel after those precedents. And it, it's also true that the, the bundling of the, 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 the part of the project that is north of, is it Seymour Street there? Is, is kind of a separate thing, but I, I think it, I think it's okay and I think it, it's actually a positive to have that in the reasons for the statement of overriding considerations because the city can plant a stake in the ground and say how important the, the residential piece of this is, especially the, the intent to do workforce housing and affordable housing. I think it's an opportunity for the city to support and encourage the applicant to do that. And we would miss that if we said, well, let's, let's not worry about that. We'll put that off to some other year. So I, I, I hope we'll, I hope we'll keep that in mind as we deliberate. That's all I have for the moment.
I agree with a lot of the comments my colleagues have made. I do think after, I guess this is eight meetings now that have been public, we've ended up with a much better looking project that fits in, uses coastal resources, and I think it satisfies the policy concerns I have about a gateway location from an aesthetics perspective. I think it does, the setback in particular and the inclusion of native plant species that are coastal scrub and other plants and some native trees does create a transition into the urban setting. And it's consistent with, I mean, it, yeah, it's consistent with the policies and, and I think that, that, that stuff's pretty clear. I think Commissioner Gorn has hit on kind of an important point, which is if we're going through this exercise of Sequa, and we're not sidestepping Sequa, right? Sequa is a planning process. And I had to go look up my fun weekend reading, Guide to California Planning, and went through my, my, the Sequa sections on there. I do think it's important that we have substantial findings that are maybe a little more, a little more detailed. I think that that is a fair analysis. And I do think that, you know, I didn't see the Burlingame project, but, but I think that that point resonates with me. I do think we've received information from the Chamber of Commerce that we could incorporate into the impact from a TOT perspective. Just taking averages, I did back of the math calculation. If an average room throughout the course of the year generates the number that Kristolyn put in front of us, it's $1.4 million. And, and I think we should incorporate, you know, there's an expected impact of between 1 and $1.4 million, you know? I would assume that those numbers might be a little lower for a mid-market business hotel, but I think it's, we have enough data to say that we're expecting a seven-figure impact from a TOT perspective. I think that's, you know, if it's 50% over or 20% less, I mean, I, I think that we've got a number that's reasonable. And it's based off of analysis provided by the Chamber of Commerce. Going back to Item B, this is actually an important part of the bike and pedestrian plan. The city has defined a plan that connects the railroad house at Johnson Park. There's bike plan, the bikes go all the way up to Pillar Cedos Creek at some point. That's part of the county's master plan. And there And there is this whole trail system that we recently approved, that the intersection there connects into the bike and pedestrian plan. So the idea is that, that, that trail is actually replacing what was in the city's master plan. And the trail that was in the city's master plan was over the wetlands. So they've actually located it so that we're actually supporting and rehabilitating the wetlands, and the idea is that that bike trail is then going to continue. The master plan has that continuing all the way on the, onto the street there, and then it takes you back over to Main Street. So there is a plan, it's not a bike trail to nowhere, and it can, I mean, and, you know, the idea is also to connect you with the Naomi Patrick Trail, which I've been on there probably twenty times in the last two months, and I can, you know, I think Commissioner Riddick's assertion that there's about a thousand, two thousand times more cars going on that than pedestrians, you know, that there's very few people who use that. So I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a major view, but it's definitely an impact. It's clearly, there's clearly a change to the view of the ridge line from certain angles. There's no question of that. And so I think that's why we're working on these overriding considerations. But I do think that this is part of the city's master plan for bikes, so I think that that is a reasonable consideration, and it is a low-cost, no-cost use, which is an important policy that we have. I'm a little ambivalent about C, in referencing the housing. On the one hand, it is part of the project, because we're doing a subdivision that anticipates adding sixteen residential units. I think it doesn't necessarily, if we just added sixteen residential units, that would be an important impact on itself. It doesn't have to be low income, it doesn't have to be workforce housing, so I think maybe we modify it to just say we're adding housing. I think that that's the right approach to take there, because I don't know what's going to happen in the future, and that's another project, and that project's not before us right now. So I think it's reasonable to remove those, those things. In terms of A, I mean, there's no question that this is geared towards visitors, I mean, this is a visitor-serving project, a hundred percent, that's the primary purpose of it, so I think that those conditions make sense. I would like to see, I mean, I think having a clear economic benefit that we expect out of here documented in this would be helpful. I'm not sure what else we really need to add, though. So if you have specific things, I mean, because we're adding a hundred hotels, a hundred hotel rooms, it's twenty percent, fifteen to twenty percent increase over what's usable today, there's an expectation of a million to 1.4 million dollars in economic benefit to the community, we're completing an important segment of the bike and pedestrian master plan, we're servicing the strategic plan, and we're creating a transition space from the rural setting, agricultural setting, to the urban setting of Half Moon Bay. So I think, I'm not sure what else you would want to add to this, this is not, you know, I don't know, that's, those are the things that I think about the SEQA document, and I think the findings for it are fine. The question becomes, what is our obligation about protecting the view? I think that's, that's the big question. I've already expressed some opinions on it, so what I'll propose is, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna agree with everything Commissioner Riddick said in terms of the view. I think it is fleeting. I've seen it many times from Highway One, I've biked, walked, ridden as a passenger, as a driver, and tried to just get a sense of what is the impact. There is no material blocking of the ridge line when you drive into town, from the front of your windscreen. If you look out the window as you drive into town, there's absolutely, you know, a blockage of the ridge line. But on my drive over here, from Poplar to Kelly, I passed seventeen structures that have a bigger, have a similar or bigger impact to obstructing the ridge line, as seen from Highway One, as seen from the Naomi Patrick Trail, as seen from anything in the Caltrans view. They are much more significant because they're closer to the highway. And so, I, if you don't want a hotel, okay, that's fine, but I think the way we've applied protection of the view of the ridge lines in the project before us, I think this is consistent with what we've done. And I don't think it's a material impact. In fact, I think this project has taken great pains to fit in, and when you look at the landscape plan that I saw today, you know, with trees and other things like that, this is going to blend in a lot better than much of the development that already sits along Highway One to the north of the project. So I, I, I think this actually has done a great job of protecting the view, and I think Mike Alafano made the comment of what's the view we're protecting today, previously, which is a bunch of broken-down trailers and, and, you know, other things that aren't really that appealing. I think this is a significant improvement, but it's definitely an impact to the view shed, there's no question of it.
With regard to the statement of overriding consideration A, is the project in alignment with the Coastal Act three zero two two two? I say yes. Is the, align, is it in alignment with LCLUP two yes three? It's possible. Is it a sustainable land use pattern, LCLUP dash two, two dash four? Yes. Is, does it include low-cost accommodations, LCLUP five dash seven one? LCLUP five dash seven three, local visitor-serving commercial development on land use map? It's a little bit unclear to me, okay? Only because there was this confusion about the designation from CG and the PUD, so it was unclear to me, but I'm not, you know, and I'm also, I also wonder about the standard, which is on, which we are now saying, which the staff has now explained, for the, let me get to that page, for the land use designation having an FAR of point five and a designation on page two ten, and for commercial, commercial general. I don't really understand why we're restricting that only to residential, as opposed to, because the other sections in here talk about residential type, so, so let's set that aside. The low-cost amenities portion, I understand that there is going to be a bike rental, so the low-cost amenities, people still have to rent bicycles. So is, what's the low cost about it, or no cost about it? I'm not getting that. The, you know, because I can ride my bike, I can walk on trails, I, right now, I have no cost because I have my, my bike, but the amenity that's being provided is, is something that I'm questioning, because this is saying low-cost amenities as part of this, you know, statement of overriding conditions that was presented to us. We can throw that out if we don't seem to like it. There is public access, item B, there is public access on, along State Route One to Naomi Patrick Trail, and through, to the bike paths through Poplar to the coastal trail. There is a bike path that goes through downtown from, from that area. I've ridden it, okay? And then this, the, you know, there will be bike trails also through the multi-asset. So, so that's being already provided to us. So that's a little bit not clear to me either. With regards to item C, which, does this contribute to Rana? It's possible, but it's not necessarily something that has been a commitment in any of the conditions of approval here. So that's a questionable thing. With regard to the TOT, I'm not really certain that the TOT is going to increase, because we don't really know. I know Kristolyn mentioned this to the city council about three months ago, saying that the effect of the lower occupancy rate is because of what's happening in San Francisco. So what, what she mentioned then, and what she's mentioning today, I understand, but it's in conflict in my head, because what was mentioned to the city council, and what she's mentioning today, doesn't seem to match up. I understand the occupancy rates for midweek, and the need for the, you know, the, to compete with, with, I guess, the Ritz with, for the high-end conferences, you know, I understand that. I also know the Beach House has many conferences, and they're booked constantly. So I'm not really sure about the TOT. So in, in relation to what Commissioner Riddick says about it's a fleeting glance and drivers are coming to it, I'm really concerned about those wheelchair accessibility people that actually, sometimes I see wheelchairs on that Naomi Patrick Trail. They deserve a right to the view. People riding on bikes coming into Half Moon Bay, or, you know, from the south, or riding, you know, from the north to the south, on bikes that actually ride their bikes to go camp at St. Francis Beach, they deserve the right, the view, and they do have a longer view when they ride their bikes to camp at St. Francis Park. They have a longer view, it's not fleeting. I walk that Naomi Patrick Trail almost every day, and I cut through Smith Field, I go down the Ritz Carlton, I see from the, the Wavecast Trail, I know that from the Wavecast Trail, the hotel does not present a view problem. But I do know, from what I see, because it's not a fleeting glance, when I walk the Naomi Patrick Trail, it does present a, a view issue, and it's not fleeting. So I'm concerned that we're not considering the bicyclists, the people in wheelchair, the people that have mobility issues, that might need to, you know, wheel their, their, you know, children on, you know, in wheelchairs, or, or, you know, even for, you know, families that are strolling along the, the path of Naomi Patrick Trails, their view is obstructed. So I don't know if we're only limiting this to the drivers, I mean, I don't see anywhere in any of the LUC policies or any of our codes that says the view shed is only for drivers. So I think we're discriminating, which I would not want to do, to all the other population. So let's think about this before we start making these broad statements about only drivers deserve the right to a view shed. I'm very, very concerned that we're not paying attention to the population at large. The other thing I have, I want to bring up is, I agree that this project is nice, it's, it's going to, instead of a vacant lot, it is a great project. It looks great. It, the applicant has worked hard to please the city staff and, and, you know, hopefully the residents of the area. But I wonder if we will be known for the city, oh, that's the city that has the Hyatt. We need to have our own image. That's the beautiful city with the vast, you know, a view sheds, that's the beautiful city. I really think it's great to have a Hyatt, it's great to have whatever you call it, if it's a Marriott, if it's a Hilton, whatever it is, it improves that sight there. But how do we prevent it from, from being, oh, that's the city with that big Hyatt? I do not want my image of my city to be known as the Hyatt. I do not want it to anchor it like the Macy's at a mall, as the anchor store. That's what I'm a little concerned about, is naming our city, framing our city as the Hyatt. You know, you know, we have so many other hotels here, we are branding this, we're naming it, we're anchoring our city, and giving preference to one business over the other, and I'm really concerned about that.
Thank you. I agree with, that we do have to discuss the LCLUP view policies, and that the view is impacted, and I'm not going to repeat, I agreed with what Commissioner Gorn said. We do have also some zoning that states that upland views are to be protected, and we didn't talk about that. There's a zoning code one eighteen three seven point oh three five, which C state structure shall be cited so as not to intrude or project above the ridge line as seen from Highway One and Ninety Two. The Town Boulevard, there are zoning, it's in our zoning that the upland slopes are to be, upland slopes provide context and visually frame many of the other scenic resources in the area, so they, we have code that says they're to be protected. That I think is something we didn't, is just something I wanted to add in addition to everything that was said about the views with the LCLUP policies. In terms of the SEQA statement of overriding consideration, I, I maybe go along with the statement A, although what is written in the staff report is different from what we read last week, because it included a provision for the workforce housing, and I don't see that in there anymore. But to move on to that, the proposed benefit B, where they project no and low-cost amenities, I didn't think that the five percent low-cost visitor-serving accommodation was adequate. I wasn't convinced that the 1.78 million dollars for the visitor amenities east of the hotel will actually benefit low-cost visitors that would come to the hotel when only five percent of the rooms are going to be set aside for that. I did look at the in-lufy report, and in the report, I think it stated that 133,000 dollars would be, was the, I don't know if I, I don't know exactly how to call it, but they were taking 133,000 dollars that was used down south, maybe at a hotel down south, using that as an in-lufy calculation, but yet, they didn't take that number and multiply it by the twenty percent that would be required according to the Coastal Act. So I'm not sure that the 1.78 million dollars is adequate, and/or the five percent low-cost rooms. And then again, I stated at the last meeting, the lack of commitment on the townhomes, I didn't see that as a benefit. And then in terms of the TOT, a true economic analysis has not been conducted. So I don't know if the TOT from, that we generate, like Rick said, hey, we could generate 1.4 million here, but what might we take away from other hotels in the area? It just hasn't been properly analyzed, and there's a lot of things to look at beyond just the TOT. And also, there's also a cost to the community, when you look at police, fire, water, sewer, roads, that is a cost that the city incurs, and that, so that's part of that economic analysis. So I'm not sure I'm buying into the TOT and the economic benefit of the project in D and E. And then when we talk about, I appreciate what you said about anchoring south of Main Street, but it's right, it's not a busy hub, you know? This isn't where we have a lot of foot traffic, or, you know, we might have, we definitely have bikers that go by, and maybe some runners, but I'm just not seeing the, the benefit of F in our statement of overriding considerations. So, you know, the hotel itself is beautiful, I think the design is lovely, but, and the other thing, and so I do want to compliment, you know, the applicant on you know, the applicant on bringing forward something that beautiful, but I'm still trying to grapple with this land use designation of Commercial General. And, and in the preceding pages to that, we talk about residential density, low density, medium, high, mobile home park. And then, we move into CG, which is the land use designation. If you look at the map, this is, this, it shows that this area is CG and it says 30 units per acre. And we know we have 2.55 buildable acres because of the lot line adjustment and the wetlands that are, are protected already and cannot be built on. And so, that gets us to 76 units. And I'm not buying into this 30 units per acre is for residential only, when in the preceding pages, we already have those standards listed in the land use designation. So, I don't know, I, I want to figure out how we, we, I, we should talk about that or, and, and I'm trying to think if there's anything else I want to add. I, I think that's it for now.
Well, so, I, I would love to be convinced. I don't really hear, like, like the convincing arguments. So, I hear, you know, that, that, you know, the minimizing, oh, it's not much of a view, we just passed by it really quickly, we can't really count the people on the Patrick Trail, we can't really, like, I hear those kind of, like, little, like, things and that it's, and that the other houses are closer to the highway and they're more of a problem than a three-story building would be, right? And so, it's a little bit like this, you know, ignoring the statement of overriding consideration should be supported by substantial evidence in the record. Like, if you ignore that, as, then, then you can kind of shoehorn it in and say, well, the money matters. And like, all these, these six things, I went through the six things, I don't really see six things. I really see one, you know, one three times, which is, it's T O T. It's money and it's visitor-serving. Like, that's what it is. And so, I get what you said about the bike path. I know we, my first meeting ever, I called it the bike path to nowhere and you were so adamant, it's not a bike path to nowhere. It's just like, you look at the map and it looks like it is, so, but I get it. So, that is a benefit, a visitor-serving benefit, and the hotel itself is a visitor-serving benefit, and the T O T is important. But like, am I really going to ignore, ignore SEQA to say, oh, but we're going to make a lot of money? Like, that's kind of what it's come down to.
You're not ignoring SEQA, though. I think you're, you're ignoring.
Well, it's part of SEQA is the statement of overriding considerations that has to be supported by substantial evidence. So, substantial evidence is not just, oh, we're going to make money.
Well, I mean, we could have one item that said, this is going to be a 20% increase in our T O T. I mean, I think.
But we don't know that. We, we, I mean, we're getting information from people that are not economists or our financial director. We're getting information from any, from everybody outside the city staff. And the city staff has not given us, and, and, you know, and it's, I'm, I'm not saying it's the city staff should be, we, we've been told that, that nobody knows if there's an economic analysis that was done for this project. That is city, that the city staff looked at.
So, so if, if.
So, convince me.
Yeah, I mean, look.
Convince me.
Look.
I want to, I want to be convinced.
I, I think we should, I think that's fair game, right? Like, what is the financial impact? I'm not, I'd be cautious about doing too many other things on it. I, if you, you were bringing up a couple of other impacts, because we don't apply that type of standard to other projects. There has been an E I R document done that looked at the impact of sewage, water, all those types of things, and there's no substantial findings. But I do think just a basic, here's the math, here's how many hotel rooms, here's the plan, I, I think that is sufficient. Wouldn't you?
I don't agree with that because when you develop land, there's always a cost to the taxpayers. You got police, fire, water, sewer, roads. That hasn't been analyzed. We haven't looked at market saturation. There's just a lot that goes into understanding the true economic benefit. And just to say, hey, yeah, we got 102 rooms, and if we have this rate of occupancy, it's going to bring in, you know, you could do the math on, on the back of an envelope, but the true economic impact to Half Moon Bay, because there is an impact to the residents if we have to pay for more police, fire, I mean, and so, I, I just, I respectfully disagree that we could do a back-of-the-envelope calculation on T O T.
But Chair Gossett, you're, that seems to me like an incredibly unfair burden to put on this applicant. What other project would you require such a crystal ball gazing view into the future? We've heard from the Chamber of Commerce, we've heard from numerous businesses down Main Street, how much this would benefit them. There's a partner, the, the applicant has studied this for eight years and he has a partnership with Hyatt, who must know what they're talking about. I, I just think, I can't think of any other project where we would require such a comprehensive economic analysis of such global impact. It just doesn't make any sense.
I respectfully, I, I hear what you're saying, but in, in a project like this, where we are stating as a benefit to, as a statement of, for our statement of overriding consideration, we really don't understand that. And it's not uncommon for municipalities to do an economic analysis when they're going to change land use or have a new development in, on land. That's not, to conduct an economic analysis is not uncommon.
Well, especially when it's, it's pretty, like, it's not the only benefit in these overriding considerations, but it's the primary one, like it is. Like, that is going to be the overriding consideration, that we're going to get money. And that's great, but I don't know that we would, like, how do you write that out as, you know, as a, you know, to the, to say, okay, we're going to utilize this SEQA clause that says, you know, that here's our substantial evidence, and our substantial evidence is, we're going to make money. We don't know actually how much, whatever, but that's what we're going to, you know what I mean? So, that's.
Well, you're, you're dissing the other things.
I am, I am. But I'm being a little flip, but I'm, but, but if, if it were, if there were a lot more overriding considerations, then maybe that would just, that's one of them, you know, and they could kind of spell it out, but it doesn't seem like there's a lot of other ones.
I can't, I can't imagine that we ever required a hotel or a motel to engage in such a thing. Why would we do that now?
But the hotel's not asking for overriding SEQA by making the statement of overriding considerations. Like, they're asking for that because they're impacting the view, they're making, what's the phrase? They're, there's an occurrence of significant effects that are not avoided or substantially lessened. I mean, that's.
Let, let me turn this around a little and maybe kind of, because, because you made the point of a convincing argument. So, if there was an economic analysis that said, we have 104 hotel rooms, we expect a 75% occupancy rate, and the resulting T O T will be 1.4 million based on analysis completed by Hyatt, the applicant, and the Chamber of Commerce, would that be sufficient? Because, because, because it's more substantial than what's in this document now. And so, if we had that analysis and it had been completed, would that be sufficient from your perspective?
I don't know. I, the, to me, like, I think there's going to be a lot of T O T. I think it's going to make money. I think there's going to be money into the city. I, I, I don't have a heart, you know, I know there's questions about it because it's not, there's no evidence to say that. But I'm more concerned about, there's an unavoidable impact, and we're going to make a statement of overriding considerations to, to, to get past that, right? And our overriding considerations is money. On a bike, a little bike path, on a pedestrian path, and, I don't know, what else? Like, money? Like, so, it, it, there's not a lot of overriding considerations.
You've blown off the enti, I'm sorry, I'm just a little frustrated. It feels like you're blowing off the entire planning process because things like having a transition is important, that is a significant thing. Having a connection point with coastside rep that they've come and talked to us about, they want to be able to use this, they want to be able to have an anchor on the south end of Main Street. That is a substantial change, and it also fits squarely into the strategic plan that the city council has laid out and said, look, concentrate development in the downtown core, this is part of the downtown core, create transition spaces for us, and let's revitalize this end of town. Because it, it, it's starting to get some traction, Pasta Moon's been a great addition, but this is part of what we go through as a planning process. And I actually think these are significant things. Could they be written a little stronger? Oh, sure. But I mean, even if I said it was a million dollars or 1.5 million, that's not even enough to really, I mean, maybe you see the T O T coming in. I think, you know, this, this will pay for itself, from a fire, sewer, all those types of things, and the Ritz pays for so much of what we do, right? This is like a one-third, this, whatever, one-third the size of the Ritz, right? This is a pretty significant project. It's not going to bring in as much revenue as the Ritz, but I think, I think those things are important. The one thing that I'm, you know, I would take away with the affordable stuff for the housing, but it does add housing. There's no question, 16 units of housing contributes towards our goal.
Well, so, I think those are compelling arguments. I, I do think that there's two things that, that matter to this area when, and, and one of them is that when you drive in, and you, and it's the first thing you see in our city, the first thing you see of Half Moon Bay, so you either see a hotel or you see the hills because this is a three-story building. So, it's a three-story building actually all the way across, even though there's, there's one that's two stories and one that's three stories, they're actually the same height, so they're really three stories. And so, you know, that's, that's really the question. So, that's a, that, you know, SEQA says, that's a problem, and you have to have these big overriding considerations to, to say, okay, well, we're going to live with that problem. We haven't talked yet about the L U P.
Which I think is, we definitely want to talk about, but I think there's a, there's a picture right over there that we saw today of the view, and the first thing you see in that picture isn't the hotel, it's the sign. And the sign, welcome to Half Moon Bay, like, that's the first thing you see. And I saw a landscape plan, there it is, with trees. So, the first thing I'm going to see are trees and a welcome to Half Moon Bay. And there's a, a pumpkin festival sign that's on the other side right now, that's orange and white, that looks really pretty. That was the first thing I noticed when I came in. When I was walking along this, this stretch, you know, what I see are the trees and landscaping, and there, there's a building there, but there's already buildings and lollipop trees and things like that that are there now. You drive, and, and then, by the way, I get your point about discriminating against categories of users. The standard, I mean, I walk that area probably and run that area more than anyone. I don't bike it as much as some people, but I'm, I'm certainly somebody who's been there on the Naomi Patrick Trail many times, and I go to that end of downtown as part of my normal run. And so, I appreciate what's being given up here. But, it's not a pretty sight. I mean, we're losing, we're definitely losing a little bit of the view of the bluff tops. The ridge line, sorry, but, but we're, yeah. But it's, when you're coming into town as a pedestrian, being pushed, pushing a kid in a baby cart, because I've done that in that area, not recently, but you're not, what are, what are we giving up here, right? Now, some people have made a very compelling point, that you're giving up everything. It's the nature of our town, you're bickering, you're, you're ruining the view. And, hey, you know, that, that's, that's a fair argument. I disagree with it. And I also think that this is a significant improvement over what we have today, and it conforms with so many of our policies in so many ways. I'm not concerned about the SEQA, and I don't think it's a big, it's, it's just, it's an overriding statement. We're choosing to do development here, and if we choose to move forward, we have to conform with the L C L U P, which we'll definitely get back to. But these other things, I think these are significant and it's material. It's a million dollars for a city like us on an annual basis, you know, recurring annuity, that's a lot of revenue, right? And, look, there's a very likely possibility in 20 years, the Ritz Carlton will not be there. We're going to need other streams of revenue for our community. And so, you know, that is an important strategic decision.
Is, okay. Why are you saying that the Ritz might not be, are you thinking that it might fall into the ocean?
Yeah, there's a whole study going into that.
Okay, I, I know there is a geological study, but, okay.
I mean, these are, these are things we need to plan for, as, and again.
Do we have data from that study to say how quickly it's going to fall into the ocean? I mean.
We don't know.
Okay, well, I want to be careful about what we say.
But we have to divers, part of our strategic plan is to diversify our revenue streams.
Is, okay, is that the role of the planning commission or is that the city council? Because I thought our job is to look at land use law, is the project consistent with that? Is it consistent with the zoning? And is it consistent with the land use designation? And I, I appreciate that they put the economic possible benefit into our statement of overriding consideration, the benefit of that, but I'm, I'm not convinced that, and I've already stated that since they haven't done economic analysis.
It, it, it is a economic diversity, having different revenue streams, we have policies around that in the L C P, and those are things that fall, you know, as we think about projects like this, this is part of the reason why we can look at.
But in our L C L U P, I think it was on chapter five, I can't remember the exact page, there was uncertainty around whether or not the hotel was needed, and it needed to be analyzed, and it, I don't think that has been.
It's 536.
Okay, so, I don't think that has been properly analyzed, so.
It has a big, it's under lodging, it starts at 535, and it, it, it goes through 536. It does speak to the fact that, you know, they were planned, especially in, the, the plan for new lodging. It names the Els, the Elsie Smith property and it named the other property as well, and that's where I thought, wow, we, we did have something stated in the L C L U P about it.
What, the current L C L P?
Yes.
536? Sorry.
And then, I also have.
I'm looking at it, I, I don't see that, I'm sorry. Policy 536? Oh.
It's page 536.
Got it.
Yeah. No, and then I also have concern about, yes, we have development along Highway One, you know, houses, two-story houses, but I'm wondering if the planning commission at that time really understood what they were doing because that has now set precedents, and I think that's where you're going at. It's the precedents that were set by planning commission that recently approved those housing. So, now, we're saying, because that precedent was set by prior planning commissioners, and, I mean, because I wasn't on it, because, you know, this is something that I have to grasp it, I have to follow and, you know, just be led because of the precedents that were set by other planning commissions. And, 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 and this to me is, is troubling me. So, I, I don't like to say, because the other planning commission, or maybe part, I don't know who was on the planning commission. I don't know who was on the Planning Commission that, at that time, decided that this was an okay thing to do, and because that is okay then, we should say okay now, I'm troubled by that.
Well, you can't, I mean, so, I think that's a fair point, um, but we have policies that are based on precedent, that are based on property rights, that are based on policies that are in these documents, and we have a body of work that says, "How have we applied that standard?" And when we go to the Coastal Commission and say, "Hey, what do you think about this?" Like, yeah, that makes sense. They, they've looked at how we've interpreted it. If we're in Big Sur, anything you can see from the street's not allowed. That's a different standard, a different body of work, right? They have a completely different L C L U P. We're not Big Sur. And we're definitely not Pacifica, and I don't want to go that way, um, but we have our own, and that's why Pacifica's in the state they're in, right?
We'll soon be there if we keep following that same precedent.
But we won't, because our policies are literally the opposite of Pacifica's.
But we had policies for those other houses that were built, and we still built, allowed that.
Because it conforms to our, our, our zoning, it conforms to our L C, the old L C L U P, which is substantially, in this case, I mean, look, we may make a determination today that, a, a, and, hey, I have no conceit that as a Planning Commissioner, I knew what I was doing 10 years ago, um, I feel like I know a little bit more, but, you know, this is evolving, right? And if we say, "This is what the protected view is now," it's gonna be a change from what we've done, and it's a change from how the Coastal Commission comes down on enforcement issues. Are you breaking the view? Are you protecting the view? Are you significantly diminishing the view? Or is it fleeting, right? Those are the kinds of questions they look at. They're not saying, when you protect something, you're not saying you can't have any development, you say there's different policies that you look at.
No, you're just saying that the hotel's too tall. That's all.
That's fine.
And that's the question. That, that's really all it comes down to, like, is it too tall?
I don't--
The, the precedent that I was talking about with 555 Poplar and 543 Felbert is, the precedent was that we balanced all of the relevant policies, not that we decided on a whim to ignore the, the, the visual thing, but we did the hard work of balancing the benefits versus the, the pretty much fleeting interruption of the ridge line.
Anybody want to talk about the L U P?
Okay.
Or should we just move this to City Council? Because, like, City Council's gonna deal with it one way or the other, like, if it's gonna be appealed to them, no matter what we--
But I do think it's a disservice if we're not, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I feel like, I've got my, my perspective on this. My question to you is, setting aside the L C L U P, because we, we need to make a finding one way or another, um, for SEQA, are there other changes you, like, like, would you approve this document? If you agreed with the L C L U P interpretation, would you, if, would you agree then that these fi, six items that are in here are acceptable, or do they need to be modified?
Um, I, I personally--
Can I call, um, point of order? I think it's better to, to consider the L C L U P first, because we need to determine if we're going to issue a C D P. Because if we're, if, depending upon which way we go, SEQA might not apply. So, that, in terms of running this efficiently, let's start, let's move on, as Commissioner Goren asked, to look at the L C L U P. And, and then, based on whatever action we take with that, then we can talk about SEQA. We've already spent a lot of time on SEQA, and I think everyone understands where we are falling on that. So, okay, do you want to start?
Would it be okay to take a two-minute break?
Of course. Okay. Okay, who would like to start talking about policy on the L C L U P? And we might pull up, I, I think we should pull up the policy in the L C L U P.
Are there's, I mean, we have like 100 policies that were referenced in the spreadsheet, and, um, you know, it was a pretty coherent statement tied to all of those. Are there specific policies that you'd like to focus on? Because I think there's probably two or three that are really gonna be the heart of anything we do.
Well, and if, if we identify those, she can go to them in our L C L U P. I, all right, so, can you go to nine, nine dash six? Okay, well, we could, um, maybe it's 9.1 or two.
It starts at 9.1.
Let's start at 9.1, Chrissy.
It starts at 9.1, sorry. Are you looking in the--
9.1, please.
Um, if, if I may, um, most of these policies are listed in the findings in the resolution.
Yep.
It might be simpler to just go to Attachment Two, Exhibit A, Findings and Evidence.
Do my fellow commissioners agree to that? Is that what you would like to see, or would you rather see the L C L U P? I personally wanted to just see the L C L U P policy, because there's findings in there that are, um--
The whole, the whole policies are copied, though, in, in, in the findings document, so you've got the entirety of the policy.
But, I mean, it, the findings are written as compliant, and you can change the language in there and, and make it non-compliant, not that I'm suggesting that, but the discussion is, I, I want to keep the discussion impartial, if possible, and I, I don't believe by pulling up that spreadsheet that we are gonna be impartial.
That, that's fine, I agree with you, but, but what I was saying is, like, when they quote the policy, they're just cutting the policy verbatim, so there's no, like--
But I see the policy right here now on the screen, it's--
Okay.
Did we want to talk about 9.1? 9-dash-1, sorry.
I think we probably need to pull up the, well, sure. center and the scenic and visual resources are applicable, so I think that, um, so then we have to say, are we protecting scenic and visual resource areas? So, if you look at figure, uh, what is it, 9-1 on page 918 of the L C L U P, it has the, um, significant visual resources are mapped. Um, so we've got the broad ocean view, which isn't from Highway One, which isn't part of this, you've got the community gateway, which is part of this project. But there are no, I think the argument that I see in the staff report, there are no upland slopes in the project site, and there's no broad ocean view. That's protected from the site.
Can you say that again? There's no upland view?
No, you said ocean. There's no upland slopes within the project site.
That's within the project site, but the map shows with the black line, the 160-foot contour line, so what are we looking at here? Are, are you saying that because the arrows are pointing to the west, it's, it's the only thing we need to look at?
Those are coastal access routes.
That's what I thought, so I'm not sure what, what you're saying is that the development in that site is not blocking the visual resources, is that what we're saying? We're, we're saying here, be, this 9-dash-1 say, it says, "Identify and protect scenic and visual resource areas in Half Moon Bay, including, but not limited, to the scenic corridors, natural, natural resource areas and built environment resources as defined in this chapter and designated in 9-dash-1." So, um, can you repeat what you said, Commissioner Hernandez?
So, the upland slopes, the broad ocean view do not exist on this site. Policy 9-3, "Visual quality, preserve and enhance the unique visual quality that contributes to Half Moon Bay's coastal and small-town character, including its open expansive views from the coastal terrace to the beaches, bluffs, oceans, and upland slopes." So, 9-3 is the view of those things, which is different from 9-1. 9-1 is those things--
Oh, I see what you're saying. You're saying, you're saying that 9-1 is talking about the resources.
Correct.
So, so are we saying that 9-1 is, is okay? I mean, it, we're complying, this project complies with 9-1, is that what, where, where this is?
I mean, you could make the argument, and this is what I'm looking at, is the town center, the gateway, um, a visual resource. I would say, for the purposes of this, no, but, um, I don't see any issues with 9-1, because the visual resources aren't located in the project site.
You could alternately say that the project could impede the views of the upland slopes.
Scenic quarter.
And the scen, scenic quarter, that's what I probably should have said. And, and it is a visual resource, um, to be protected. So, you're looking at the entire scenic corridor, meaning you're, you're, you're driving in one way and you're looking at the vastness, and looking at the entire area to the, if you're going north, you're looking to the east.
I, I think that's 9-3, that's how I would look at the visual, I just, I view the visual resource as the actual item, not the, I mean, it's the view of the item.
So, what I think, what you're saying, Commissioner Hernandez, is that the, 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 um, project is not being built on the visual resource.
Right.
Okay. Are you talking about 9-3?
9-1.
Oh, 9-1.
So, I, I don't, yeah, that's how I, I interpret the policy on 9-1.
So, I thought it, we were protecting the visual resource, not, and, and protect the scenic and visual resource. So, when you say scenic, that's part of the, I think, view shed, correct me if I'm wrong, but, and it says, "Including but not limited to scenic corridors," and, and there's a scenic corridor there with the upland hills.
I, I mean, you, look, our, our objective is to protect, I mean, 9-1, 9-2, 9-3 are arguably duplicative, along with 9-12 and 9-23. So, um, I think the, I read the findings and evidence as presented by city staff, and I agree that the actual resources themselves don't exist on the site. That is the only thing that I was doing with 9-1. Now, we still have a protected view, which is covered in 9-2, 9-3, 9-12, and 9-23, and we can, we can get to those, but the actual resource itself, um, isn't physically located there.
So, just so, correct me, uh, let me understand what you're saying. You're saying 9-1 only applies to the site and not to the scenic corridor or view shed? It, it just refers only to what's on the site to now, and nothing else around it?
I mean, it's ambiguous, so you guys can, I mean, I'm just, I look at the findings, I look at the compliance with the staff report, um, that's how I'm, I'm, and I think that--
Wait, wait, compliance with the staff report?
With the findings and evidence in Exhibit A.
Okay.
I'm looking at the analysis that was provided by city staff. So, but it doesn't matter, right? Because at the end of the day, what, the, the, the only thing that I think we're really concerned about is, is this view of the upland slopes, it is definitely protected, to what degree is it protected, and to what degree is it impacted by this project? I mean, we can, we can hash out a specific policy, but all of these things are basically looking at that. It doesn't affect development above the 160-foot contour line, it says we have to protect the, the views. And, and what is the view that's protected?
Okay, just, just, um, understanding, we're still on policy 9-dash-1, we're not combining all the three policies and talking about them together, correct? We're still on policy 9-dash-1? It's a question.
Yeah, so, so--
Okay.
Policy 9-1 says, "Identify and protect scenic and visual resource areas."
And it's staff's interpretation, at, at which they are recommending to us, based on their professional opinion, that because there's no development actually occurring on the upland slopes, this satisfies, this project satisfies 9-dash-1. And then, they're also saying that there are policies addressing development on upland slopes do not apply, which is true, that's a true statement, because this is, this, this project is not on an upland slope. So, if, if, so the question is, is that, do we agree with staff's interpretation and their professional opinion coming to us? That's the question here, unless we want to debate and make up our own interpretation.
Well, I think, as Commissioner Hernandez said a moment ago, and, and, and maybe I'm misremembering this, but I think on October 9th, we had a pretty broad agreement that, yes, there is-- is intrusion into the ridgelines, which is in conflict with a couple of these Chapter nine policies, but the, so the question for us comes down to, again, is there balance? Do we try to balance that with the, with the other policies in the LUP that are beneficial and that are delivered by this project?
But if we're going to discuss this from a professional standpoint, there is no development intruding on the ridgelines. It's the visual intrusion. So we need to come to terms with the compliance of nine one. So is the question, is the development intruding, being, not the visual, is the development intruding on the ridgelines? That's the question at hand.
Well, you're right. Clearly, it's not. The, there, nine three and perhaps others are more germane to the question of the view.
I think it could be argued that nine one applies to it because it says, including but not limited to scenic corridors. I mean, it is, it is a, it is a natural resource area. I don't, I don't think that's really an issue, but I would-
I don't think you can torture everybody.
But I could get around it, yeah. So, I mean, but nine three, nine twelve and nine twenty-three are the three.
Commissioner Gossett, Chair Gossett, I should say, what, do you have a comment on that?
Oh, I think I already stated, I thought that that this could impede on the visual resource area and the scenic, the scenic and visual resource area. So, I mean, you could say, oh, it's in compliance with it, and you could say, you know, I mean, we are impacting that scenic and visual resource area with something that is pretty close to Highway one, even though it is set back two hundred feet. That's, well, I don't think it's two hundred feet, it's a hundred feet. That's still very close to Highway one, so as compared, if you think of the fire tower that we've talked about in the past, that's set way off Highway one by at least, I don't remember if it's two hundred feet or three hundred feet.
So is it fair to say that policy nine one sets the stage for us to consider policies to nine two and nine three?
Yeah, I think nine one is kind of vague. I mean, it has some specific things. That's why I think going to nine two and nine three would probably be more, but it doesn't matter. Nine one says we need to protect them, so that's fine. Let's talk about what's protected. What is the protected view? Because nine one, nine two and nine three are really at the heart of it. There's no impact to a broad ocean view from this project. We agree with that, correct? Okay. So the question becomes, what is the protected view of the upland slopes and the ridgelines? And, you know, I don't think there's anything in here that's an absolute, to Commissioner Ruddick's point. It's a balancing act. And, you know, I think if I look at nine two, and I talk about how is the development sighted, right? It's sighted far back. They've also hidden the parking, which is another policy that we have, is you don't want to have parking be the thing that you see when you're driving in, is your transition It largely, but does not completely protect the views. So if I'm looking at that view from the intersection of Main Street and Highway one, there's no interference with the ridgeline. And there's very little interference with the upland slopes from Main Street looking north, along Highway one.
So let me ask you this question. It says here, new development shall be sighted and designed to protect views to and along the ocean. What does that mean? Why are we talking about upland slopes here? In the next, in the comma, said to minimize the alteration of natural landform, it follows the quest, it follows the first statement that says, along the ocean.
Yeah, I agree with you. I always thought we were going to focus on nine three, be more specific.
Yeah, I agree with you on nine two. So I don't, I don't see any issue with nine two, to your point.
But it is intrusive-
Can you bump it up to nine three?
I'm still on nine two.
Yeah, but nine three is like, oh, God.
But you want to move on to nine three?
Well, just to the ocean view, sorry. You can talk about, does it fit into the character? We can keep this going.
Yeah.
We don't need to move on. Commissioner Johannes was asking me about the broad ocean view. I mean, there's a question of, does it fit into, is it compatible with the character of its setting? And were feasible, does it enhance the visual quality in a visually degraded area?
So then if you were to split this apart, is it compat, to be visually compatible with the character of its setting? Yeah, so, I mean, if we really want to think this through, let's take it and think it through. So do we feel that this, this project is in character, compatible with the character of its setting? So what is the setting?
Well, the setting, from my view, is you have a transition point into town. This is the beginning of what we call the town center. It's a southern gateway. And it clearly establishes a transition point in three ways. One, it has natural, naturally occurring, it'll have a rehabilitated wetland, so you're restoring an existing space. You're providing natural landscaping with coastland scrub and other native plants and trees that are part of the area. The only question, and I think those two points are fairly strong in terms of blending into the character and the setting and creating a transition point. I think there's an argument to be made that might be less compelling, that the nature of the construction, the types of materials they're using, the colors blend in and they're consistent, but visually, it's taller than the surrounding buildings. It doesn't look like the Ford gateway, the Ford dealership next door. But to me, it creates a, it sends a clear message that you've now entered the city of Half Moon Bay. That's what it conveys to me from that policy for nine two. And so, and I do think it substantially enhances the visual quality, because the back of the Ford dealership is not pretty, and it's a swamp in that area right now, and there's a bunch of broken down heaps that are sitting along the south end of Main Street. So I do think that that's a change.
So you're saying this is a transition to the downtown area, not to the city of Half Moon Bay, because to me, entering the city of Half Moon Bay is at Miramondo's Point Road?
We're entering the town center.
Center, town center, okay. Just to make sure. I just wanted, because I heard differently.
So basically, the city staff report says that the hotel doesn't block the bluffs. And that's the, that's the argument. Well, the, the hills, doesn't block. So, I mean, I guess that's, because nine three, nine twelve, nine twenty-three are like really clear, like if you read what it says there, it couldn't be more clear. So, thanks for writing that.
Sorry? Oh.
Yeah.
But are we moving on from nine two?
Well, the only thing I would like to state is that I believe it is intrusive view, and it might not be compatible with the setting. It's very long and large compared to other part, other structures in the town center. So I don't see it as being consistent.
It's shorter than the collective development on Arnold and Main Street, the senior housing.
But that's set back from Highway one. We're on a scenic corridor here, or Town Boulevard, that is supposed to be protected.
The view for the town corridor that's protected is the view of the ridgeline and the upland slopes. And then there is a visual resource area, which is the transition point into town. And then there's the protected view of, the broad protected view of the ocean. The question I would have for nine two is, does that, the building is larger than any building adjacent to it. It is not taller than every building adjacent to it, thanks to the fire tower. It is shorter than many of the buildings two blocks down on Arnold. And it, the facade is less bulky than the Struck the Mercy housing that's right along Main Street, which arguably, yeah, anyway.
Well, the Mercy housing, Leslie, are you talking about Leslie Gardens?
The other one that's right on, the one that's right on the corner of, on Main Street.
Yeah, that's like more than half a mile away from this site, so it's not like right next door. I mean, we're, you know, it's correct to say that there's a transition from rural, like, because we see these beautiful farm fields and the Johnson house and the upland slopes as we're driving in, and then all of a sudden, we're going to have something that might not be compatible with the character of the setting and impedes on the visual
So in looking at page, let's see, nine dash one nine, at the top, it says, the LUP provides for the protection and enhancement of scenic and visual resources pursuant to coastal, the Coastal Act. LUP policies identify scenic and visual resources as the scenic corridors, natural resources, and the built environment resources designated on nine dash one, and include requirements to protect such areas. So it's defined as, maybe, you know, you guys can correct me, as the scenic corridor. So now we go back to the scenic corridor. Right?
Look.
And natural resources, don't, if you could excuse me, and the natural resource would be the rehabilitated wetland.
Yeah, I mean, this is a really simple argument. Do you look at this project and say, this enhances the town character? Does this convey, this is a Half Moon Bay structure, does it create that sense of continuity? To me, it does, and it's a significant improvement over what we have today, just on nine two. It is a little large, but if you look at the fire station, which is a significant structure, it's also very large and has a, like a very, you know, huge red roof, and then you've got the forty-five foot fire tower. You've got two other structures that are of similar but smaller mass. I don't think it's a big, a big jump. It is definitely different.
Well, and it's, it's not a completely subjective question, right? Because the, the character and the compatibility of the project is a result of years of work with staff and the public and the professional architects who make up our AAC. I think that's resulted in a lot of good visual compatibility and character to the project.
Okay, so I could see, I want to move this along. I could see that we are not in agreement here. Commissioner Goran, what are you thinking on nine two?
I, I think that the, the real issue is nine three, nine twelve, nine twenty-three. And that, I mean, maybe nine two applies, maybe nine one applies, but if you look at nine three, nine twelve and nine twenty-three, it's kind of hard to ignore.
Okay, so we didn't agree on nine one, nine two, but let's move on to nine three
Well, if I may, one thing I'll point out about nine three and nine twelve, while we've, we've established that there is some small intrusion into the ridgeline view, those two policies call for us to preserve and to protect, I think. Protect the views. And I, I think that the project has made every reasonable effort to minimize that intrusion into the ridgeline view, the setback from the highway, the fact that it doesn't exceed the height limits and zoning, the north-south orientation of the two buildings to minimize the field of view that you get coming up Highway one.
I think it says, preserve and enhance the unique visual quality that contributes to Half Moon Bay's coastal and small town character, including its open expansive views from the coastal terrace to the beaches, bluffs, ocean and upland slopes. So I have in my notes that the project is, looks, it's bulky, and its height, although it's below the height limitations, does not preserve or enhance the unique quality of the city as, because it blocks the expansive view from, you know, several different angles. So if you just take the words and use the words, because words mean something, I'm not trying to say one way or the other, I'm just trying to grasp and understand. So, and then you look up the definition of preserve, and it says, to keep something as it is, especially in order to prevent it from decaying or becoming damaged or destroyed. So what are we willing to do here?
I mean, I'll tell you, that is the ugliest lot in Half Moon Bay, south of Kelly, today. The visual quality of that space, that particular cheese wedge, is gross. And, you know, you are losing a portion of the upland slope view from a few certain angles, but on the bulk, you're gaining a substantially better project that does not make our town look like it is a RV dumping ground, which is what you get today. This makes a significant change to the visual quality. And I would argue that, yeah, you're giving something up, but this is a significant improvement. So I agree with preserve and enhance.
So I wouldn't characterize- So I wouldn't characterize an RV as a dumping, as a dump, because people actually live in some of these RVs, so I don't want to, to actually disparage that. It, I think that's, to me, I, I would feel insensitive saying that. But I do feel, hold on, I do feel that you're right, that the, the design, the entire lot being developed is being developed in a nicer, better way. It's, it's pleasing, okay? It's, that, there's no question about it. But this policy is talking about visual quality, not about what's being built there. It's what has, it, it's, it's asking us, what is proposed to be built there? Will it affect the visual quality? Or will it, and does it preserve and enhance the unique visual quality that contributes to Half Moon Bay? That's the question we need to answer. And what the staff has told us to do, it says that we need to now go to nine twelve and nine twenty-three. So, you know, so it, so I, to me, I don't know. Although this project is beautiful and, and, and colors schemes are great and they've, you know, set it back, this question here has not been answered as far as preserving and enhancement, if you were go to look at the definitions of preserve and enhance. I'm just trying to be consistent in how I look at things. And so far, we're looking, I looked at definitions, I looked at, you know, processes. I don't want to pull something out the side of my neck and just say something is good when, with not discussing this in detail.
So, um, so, sorry, but the staff report basically says there's no change to the view. So, I mean, the, I mean, I, I know there is. I can see that there is. And there's more of a change to the view, obviously, from the Batridge Trail than there is from Highway one. But even from Highway one, there is a change to the view. So I guess the question is, I look at it and I go, "Wow, this is really tall. This is three stories." You know, couldn't it be two? I don't know. But so, you know, it's very hard for me to, to sort of swallow the, the staff point of view that this doesn't impede the view in any way. And when I look at nine three, nine twelve, nine twenty-three, which we haven't gotten to nine twelve and twenty-three, but like it couldn't be more clear. Like, we have to preserve and enhance the open expansive views to the upland slopes, to the bluffs and upland slopes. Like, that's what it says. And so if you believe that it doesn't impede those views at all, then we're go, you know, we're golden. But if you feel like it does, like when you stand there and, and you feel like it does, because it's tall, then that violates the LCLUP.
Yeah, well, we, we, we all agreed on that on October ninth. But, you know, I, I think this, this thinking that one strike kills the project is a thing we have to get away from, because we're, again, talking about balancing, as Commissioner Hernandez said, giving up a, a small slice of that upland slope view for all the other benefits that, that the project brings, including turning, as he said, the ugliest lot in Half Moon Bay into a, a gateway we can be proud of.
I said, "South of Kelly."
Okay, okay. Amended.
But, but I, and just go back to your point, Commissioner Joannus. Um, the, it's not that somebody's living in an RV. It's that there's broken down vehicles that are falling apart that need to be removed. And, and that's, and that's what you see, right? And there, maybe people don't have the means, but that is what we see today is a really junky visual corridor. And I would love to obstruct that with, and change and enhance the view so that it is more attractive to look at. I would like to get rid of this weedy, scrubby lot and replace it with a rehabilitated wetland. That is a much better thing to look at than what is there today.
But it's, it's more than a rehabilitated wetland. It's a rehabilitated wetland with a very long building that's very tall. And it impacts the visual small-town character of, of Half Moon Bay from Highway one. And it's, it's not, it's set back a hundred feet because we have a wetland and a buffer there. It's very close to the highway as compared to the other comparisons that were mentioned. So, so it's okay, I mean, we're building this, not we building this, but we're, we might allow this to go through. I'm just trying to sort, solve this in my head. Only because we're trying to cover up the cars that are parked along Main Street that are broken down. And that doesn't make sense to me.
And some of those cars, I have to tell, talk to some of the residents that live at Mid Penn. And a lot of the, the families there are multi-generational and they don't have enough parking spaces behind their housing. And they use that. So th- those cars, I mean, you know, they're always going to be there. They're never going to go away because they have, you know, three or four cars per family.
Yeah, but they'll be hidden. I mean, that's the point. There'll be a building in the way. I think the this would be the smallest Hyatt place, is my understanding, of any Hyatt place property, because they've made it so much smaller. I've heard testimony from Mr. James on that. And, you know, it doesn't scream Hyatt in big neon letters, you know? It, it, it's somewhat, it's Yeah, but you, you can see the, you can see the, the images, right? That they're there. But it's, going back to that, I, look, we're a tourist-serving town. If you guys don't think we should put a hotel there, fine. They can put in a five-story building and we can have that discussion later on. Or, or three-story, because it'll be, you know, density bonus law could potentially apply there. But to me, a hotel at this part of town with a restaurant and a bar across the street from the theater, it creates an anchor point, which really centers our town. And this is consistent with the pattern of development. It's not half a mile, maybe a quarter mile, but it's two blocks is where Arnold is. And where this other development is, this Main Street housing, the Mid Penn housing, all of this concentrated, very heavy development that does look very uniform and very blockish. It, it, it fits into that form.
A point of order, it's ten fifteen and we're supposed to end at ten thirty. Do we want to extend the meeting till eleven?
Sure.
Yes. Okay.
I move, we have to extend the meeting to eleven PM.
All in favor?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez, I, 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 I'm not saying I don't want a hotel there. I'm just saying that this hotel as designed, it's a beautiful place, but as designed, it's, how do we resolve this visual quality? That's what I'm saying. The hotel is beautiful. The hotel is needed. The hotel will give us a lot of, you know, possible, you know, financial, you know, revenues. There's no question about that. We're tasked with this policy and how do we figure this out? And this is what I'm saying.
If you take that whole cheese wedge, seventy percent of the view of the cheese wedge, if you're driving along Highway one, you don't see any obstruction of the ridgeline. Seventy percent's a rough number. I've walked this, I've gone through it many, many times. There's definitely an impact over here on the Naomi Patridge Trail. That's what you're talking about. We're fighting about that view. Cause that's the only view in terms of blocking the upland slopes and blocking the ridgeline. That's the only part that's significantly impacted.
I, I actually walked the crown of the street yesterday and, because we were talking about that last, at the last hearing. And from the crown of the street, the view was impeded. So I don't see how we could say that it's only impacted when you are walking on the Naomi Trail.
From here or from here?
Adjacent to the site.
Yeah, so, so right there, as you're, as you're crossing this last bit of the site, it's absolutely, I agree with you. It absolutely blocks you when you're in the middle of the street.
And it's not a fleeting sliver of, of obstruction. It is a long building.
But, but then
No, but if you're, if you're seeing it from the crown, it better be fleeting, because you better be in a car going fifty miles an hour.
But, but as, as Commissioner Joannus said, there might be people on the highway. We're building a new bike trail with the Caltrans multi-asset
Well, that's not the crown, then, is it?
But it's, but the crown isn't, I'm, I just had to go out there because that's what we were talking about at the last hearing. But there's no policy that says we must protect that view from the crown. So even if you're adjacent to the highway on the, on the east side, the view is impeded.
You're right that it, it's the town center, or the Town Boulevard view to the upland slopes is what's protected. And then there's no clear definition of exactly what that means or where it ends. So all I can tell you is, that view, even in the most obstructed view that you have, is a better view of the upland slopes and the ridgeline than the entire pattern of development from Seymour to Kelly. Because you lose the entire view of the upland slope. And so, and again, it's, you're seventy percent of the way past the site. And the only way you're going to notice this, if you're driving, is if you turn your head. Or if you're on a bike, if you turn your head.
But there are also passengers in the car.
That's fire.
You know, so are they obligated to look straight ahead? They can't turn their head to look?
I mean, is this
This is, like, to say that, you know, the driver is entitled to that view when there are passengers, there are other, as Commissioner Joannus, I won't repeat it, but there are other folks that are also entitled to the view. And it's not just the driver going by at fifty miles an hour.
I agree with you. I just think in balance, we're not losing very much. And that's a difference of opinion.
So in balance, we're not using, losing very much. And, and again, trying to figure out. Today, we're saying, "Oh, it's only a fleeting view, it's thirty percent." Then we have another development probably further down someplace else. We're going to have to rely on our decision today for those other developments as precedence. And this is what I'm scared about.
So, so let's, let's, let's dig into that, because, you know, there's policies around development in the downtown core. This is, we're trying to focus our development from south of Main Street to north of Main Street, you know, from one end to the other. This is part of what was laid out. And, you know, so it had a lot, this project has been informed tremendously through public hearings and through the feedback of the Architectural Advisory Committee. And they gave, you know, pretty strong endorsement of this project.
It's not that we have to get an endorsement. This is the part that is a problem. There's no endorsement from the Architectural Review Committee. They gave us their opinion that this is a good design. I don't think they discussed very much about the visual corridor or any of these policies. Their main charge is to talk about the architectural features, which none of us has disputed here.
So we have a pattern of development that exists one block north that impedes on the ridgeline in a more significant way for that passenger who's facing sideways, who's turned their head sideways, or they're on a bus facing sideways. I agree that that is an impact. I don't think it's material. I don't, I'm not worried about the precedent because we have other policies that protect us. What I will say, though, is that broad view of driving, driving or walking along Highway one and looking into the town center with the fog coming over the hills and the sun coming over the top of the Santa Cruz Mountains, right? You're going to see that. That is not going to be impeded by this. And if anything, I think you're going to have a much better quality. But if your view is on the whole, that little thirty percent sliver, which is fleeting, and I think that's the language we need to be using here, is it significant or is it fleeting?
I, I don't think we should use fleeting because it maybe was used in the past for a small fire tower that is a lot smaller compared to the length of this. There's not a comparison. So I'm concerned about using that term fleeting, because I don't want to continually repeat that.
Well, to me, fleeting makes sense because, again, in, in a vehicle at normal speeds, you're talking about three seconds compared to your total trip through the city of, of what? A lot longer than that. And I, I think if you, if you go down the path of ignoring and discounting all the benefits of this project and all the work that's gone into this, and deny it because of this small and fleeting intrusion, it's, it's an unhealthy focus on the letter of the LUP and not the spirit of the LUP. The spirit of the LUP is, we balance development and, and especially visitor-serving development with protecting all the coastal resources. And it's a potentially an awfully extreme point of view.
And if we look at the three million people who visit Half Moon Bay annually, ninety percent of them plus are going to be seeing our city through a vehicle, through a car. Now, hopefully, some of them will get out of their vehicle and they'll take advantage of the bike path that's there. They'll hopefully be able to connect across the street to the Naomi Patridge Trail, which will now become more used. And I think that, that, that's a real benefit. But it's, there's no question there's a visual impact. And, you know, we are still able to have a policy. And, and, you know, if I look at five-five-five Poplar, there's no question that project has an impact. But what Paul McGregor didn't say was, "We tortured him on that project." We did, because we didn't like it. And we made it visually better because it was in such a prominent location. And I hope he agrees now that it is an outstanding project, because it looks amazing. And hopefully, it's worth a lot more as a result of it. But we looked at the whole visual impact of that project. We knew what we were doing.
So do we want to talk about, did we already finish nine twelve? Are we, no. Okay, let's go to nine twelve. And then after, after that, we'll hit, I think, nine twenty-three.
My point of view on nine twelve is, again, acknowledging that there is some blockage of the ridgeline view that many steps have been taken in the, in the project to protect that view as much as possible. But it doesn't protect it a hundred percent. Nobody's arguing that.
Well, city staff is arguing that, actually. That's what city staff says.
Well, I know, those, those particular viewpoints are, are, are accurate, but maybe not the full story. But anyway, take, taking as, the project takes as many reasonable steps as can be done to, to protect those views and minimize the problem with the views, which, again, I think is what the, the spirit of the LUP is all about, which, which flows, of course, from the, the spirit of the Coastal Act to begin with, which requires us to balance development, visitor-serving development, especially with protecting coastal resources.
And, and, and I don't, reading the revised findings, I think there's several things city staff have taken in view that I agree with, that there's no impact. But there's a pretty substantial write-up here that talks about the fact that there is an impact. And these are, there are many things that have been done to minimize that, but then also allow the property owner to enjoy their rights. Which, again, is part of what we're trying to balance here, because trying to balance here. Because, but there's definitely an impact. There's no question of it. But I largely agree with the analysis on 912. I don't see anything that is problematic.
development in close proximity to or easily visible from the town boulevard scenic corridor, including highways 1 and 92. Part A says protects views of visual resource areas as seen from the town boulevard, including views to the ocean, upland slopes, i.e., minimizes, that is, minimizes intrusions to the ridgeline and the historic Johnston House. Well, we know that doesn't apply. So the question is, the minimization of intrusion, which Commissioner Hernandez is saying is, what, 30% did you say? Right? So-
I mean, I don't even think it's a 30% impact. I think it's a de minimis impact, but I think the, it doesn't say eliminate intrusions-
Right.
-into the ridgeline.
But it also says as seen from the town boulevard. So what point in the town boulevard? You know, so this is the question that we start to talk about, is like, if we want to really understand it, it's not from that little portion, or, you know, you know, these are vague, how they're written. And I think they're vague, they're written because you want to treat each project with respect to their design, their, you know, not all projects are equal. I get this. I understand policy and give people the wiggle room. So now we have to discuss, what, I mean, what does this mean from the town boulevard? Where along town boulevard is it? Along, on, you know, Kelly? And where is it? You know, so let's, do we, what is that point?
Well, regardless of the point of reference you choose, the steps that the project has taken to minimize that intrusion are equally valid. The setback, the north-south orientation, the height limitations.
But I do think it's, look, part of our job is to establish, what is that protected view? And we're hashing this out, right? Like, that is our job. And we may not be in accord here, but my, my general sense of the town boulevard, again, based on the body of work that we've had here, and my evolving understanding of what we want to protect and how we want to think about planning, is, what is your 98% use case? What is your 95% use case? The most common use case is, let's start with that. And that's not the only thing we need to look at. But you start with that as a point of analysis. And that's the view of walking, biking, or driving, what do you see that's right in front of you without turning your head? And in that use case, there is nearly zero impact. It's not zero, but it is nothing compared to so many other things that are already happening. I think that that's fair. As soon as you get to that cross point, where you start to see the structure and your parallel to it, you absolutely start to see the impact of the ridgeline. But that's where you're turning your head at a 90-degree angle to look at it. I don't, I don't think that's the view we need to be as concerned about. I think it's the view of our city as a whole when you're coming into town from that south gateway. That's my view.
Right. But that's not what the LCLUP says, so.
It doesn't say one thing or another.
I believe that there's, there will be projects, and have been projects, that I hate, that I have voted for. And there's projects I love that I have voted against. And this screams to me that it violates LCLUP in those three sections, 93, 912, 923, to me. And on top of that, we're trying to, we're doing all these other things to minimize and to pretend that this isn't really happening, and giving these, this statement of overriding considerations to override CEQA, which I know is part of CEQA, but really-
We're not overriding CEQA.
Right. But, but that's, it is what you're, you're using that clause in CEQA inappropriately. And, you know, I can read it to you again if you really want me to. But I think those things together, like, it's clearly violation of the LCLUP to me, and we got this statement of overriding considerations that is, like, shouldn't be taken lightly. And it feels like it's taken lightly. It feels just like in the staff report that says there's no change to the view, and so we should approve this. But we know there's a change to the view. It's just a question of how much. And, you know, I don't-
That's not what the staff report says, though. The staff report doesn't say there's no change to the view. It says there's no impact to the view from point A, point B, there is an impact to the view from point C. That's clearly stated in the staff report.
No, as demonstrated in viewpoints two and three, the proposed project does not affect views of the ridgeline and upland slopes-
Correct.
... which are natural landforms protected under this policy. Like, that's their, it complies because there's no change to the view.
And there is a view-
It's all minimizing. And, you know, like, if you look at what's in 93, 912, and 923, it says it right there, that we have to protect the views of the upland slopes. Like, it says it. So, I mean, I really, like, I'm so torn. I honestly, like, I think your points are really good. I think I want this project, but I just can't ignore that personally. I can't ignore it. So I'm sorry, but that's, that's what I see.
No, I hear you. My counter to that would be, it's, the project works hard for that, to provide as much protection as it can, and the violation of the policies, as you point out, there are violations, but they are small and well-managed. I think the Coastal Commission, in a case like this, would say that the project substantially adheres to the intent of these policies.
Well, then it'll go to council, they'll approve it, and it'll go to Coastal Commission, because-
I'd just like to see us, well, as I've said, I'd like to see us be a little more explicit about balancing all the benefits of the project and not being overly obsessed with the, with these, the relatively small violations of the ridgeline view.
A violation is a violation. I don't see how we're supposed to balance the benefits of the project with the rules that are telling us, with the policies in nine, in chapter nine, right? So I understand that this project is great. I understand all of that. I just don't understand how I can legally say, when I say legally, it's like, in accordance with the policies, that it doesn't violate anything. So we're saying, it's like, it's okay to violate, to lie a little, or violate a little, I should say, not lie a little, violate a little, it's okay. Violating a little is okay. I don't understand that. And maybe I'm just such an absolute person that I feel like, a violation is a violation. If it's a little one or a big one, it's a violation. And I don't understand how to get around that.
Well, I don't think that's how the LUP works, though. And that's not how the Coastal Act works. Everything, it's not all black and white. Every project has shades of gray.
I mean, the conclusion of this 800-page tome on planning is CEQA is a muddle, and it's unclear. And it's up to you, as a planning commission, to make decisions and to not kick the can to council, but to make a decision on-
So CEQA is a process of planning, it's a process of disclosure of impacts. It's not a planning document. It's a process document.
That talks about CEQA, lays out the challenges and the muddle that CEQA creates for people. And yes, it's not, it's not-
CEQA is the law. That is a planning document. So I just want to make sure that we understand that CEQA is a process of disclosing effects and impacts. And so that's what I want to make sure we understand. We're not sitting here as planners because none of us have a planning degree.
And we're not overriding CEQA. We are following CEQA, which I think is something that we've talked about here is-
Right. I don't know, I don't think we're overriding CEQA.
Correct.
We're contemplating conditions of approval through an overriding of the CEQA law. Okay? So I understand that. So, you know, I don't believe that we're circumventing CEQA at all, because that's what we're saying, okay?
Great, so we're in accord on that point. The, if you apply the standard you're applying now, 17 structures, we could argue, would need to be torn down to protect the view on Half Moon Bay because they shouldn't have been built, right? Along Highway One. I don't think that's where you're going, but 17 quality projects, well, mostly quality projects, are there because we have a body of work that has built up to this point. And the policies we have now are substantially the same under the old LCP as a new LCP. It's all based on the same body of work. We did not invent this from whole cloth, and we did it on purpose because we wanted to have case law, case history behind us from a planning perspective. If you disagree that we can't have any violation whatsoever, okay, then we're not going to approve any projects. We're going to approve very few projects.
Well, there's an opportunity for anyone to come in with a project that would comply with our ordinances and our rules and our regulations and our policies. And, you know, this project has gone through iterations of things trying to comply. So instead of, I don't understand why this project cannot comply. Why can't it not comply? We're trying to find ways to have it, to minimize, we're trying ways to do something. Why can't a project just comply?
Because it doesn't make money, and it's a visitor-serving purpose. I mean, but it does comply, actually. I mean, that's the point, is I fundamentally agree that this project conforms to our policies. And I don't think we're going to get past that tonight, so.
So can we then just call the question?
Okay, let's call the question. I move that the Planning Commission, Resolution P-24, resolution for denial, PDP 072-13. Do I have a second?
There are, if you look at that resolution for denial, there are spaces that are reserved for the Planning Commission to provide the text for why they can't make those findings.
And so what I'm doing is calling the question. I'm introducing the motion, I'm asking for a second, and we could have a discussion after that. I didn't say we were going to vote on it. I'm aware of that process. Thanks, Doug. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, so now we can have a discussion about that. So if, as you said, Doug, we have to make findings for that, and there's, we just talked about the LCLUP policies, 912, 312, 23, maybe Coastal Act 302, 51. And I'm sure there's others.
I would not include 91 and 92. I think 93, 912, and 923 speak to it.
Okay.
I would also say that the statement of whatever conditions was inadequate. That's what I would say.
When you say, could you clarify that statement of-
Statement of overriding considerations.
Okay. I don't know, does that apply to the CDP? I don't think that would apply-
No.
Oh, that doesn't apply to CDP, sorry.
Because that's a, yeah, that's a separate-
You don't need to consider any CEQA.
If this prevails, CEQA isn't, we don't take action on that.
Right.
So did, we gave some policy, maybe Policy 4-10 on the In-Lu program for converting prime soils?
I don't understand how there could be any findings for that. If there's a qualified person did the work.
Well, I mean, it doesn't mean we agree with that. I mean, the In-Lu fee was like $38,000 to convert, you know, 2.55 acres somewhere else in terms of a conservation easement. Now, can $38,000 buy a conservation easement on 2.55 acres? Do we think that's reasonable? Maybe you disagree with me, and I respect that.
I think it would appear nuts to people if we were getting into that type of reasons for denial. It's just my personal opinion.
But, I mean, we stated other, we stated other policies. I think staff is seeking guidance on what they are. And we would ask you to write the findings for that. I mean, that's, I think-
If everyone would just look at the denial resolution, which was the last item in your packet, there's a map there, and I think you should follow that. Because right now, I don't think we can write the findings based on the information that's been provided to us.
Okay, so you did provide the 93, 923, but there might be more, Doug. I mean, we are the Planning Commission that are giving you that information that we believe might support findings for denial. Is it your job to disagree with us, or is it our job to tell you what the policy is?
You're making those findings. What we put in the approval resolution was our recommendation of findings. If you want to change those, you can. If you want to deny the project, you're going to have to come up with the basis for the findings for denial.
Actually, I've seen in the past where we've directed staff to come back to us with findings for denial. I mean, is this all you would ever come, if we asked you to provide more findings? You're not going to come back to us with that? Is that how it works?
Chair, if I may. So I am hearing you, and it sounds like we just have a few so far, and you're going to be very clear on which policies that you're not finding in the project to be consistent with. Is that right?
Yes.
So then I think, I mean, we were tracking these over here. As you go through these, we could, I think we could just read them into the record one at a time as you go through them. But I think right now, if you can identify what they are, and then we can go back through, and we can attempt to try to read them into the record, do you think that would work? Yeah? So we don't have to come back, because we don't want to generate more work on this. If you're going to make these findings, this decision, we can do this tonight.
Okay, so do we want to, we have, I think we extended the meeting to 11 o'clock. Could that be done before 11? Okay.
If, if I may, for the chair. So I've been taking notes during your discussion of policies 9-3, 9-12, and 9-23 to capture the, the main points you've been raising as issues for concern. And so I have some draft findings based on the comments I've heard that I could read to you to see if those would be what you have in mind if you were contemplating a denial resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Should I, should I go ahead?
Of course.
Okay. So, for 9-3, I have, "The project does not preserve and enhance Half Moon Bay's unique visual quality because the project's height and mass interferes with expansive views of upland slopes from the coastal terrace."
Are you asking for our consent? Or, or not consent, or?
Or, I, maybe I could say, well, I, I'm presenting as that, that is what I have drafted. And if, and they, these could be modified further to support a motion for a denial resolution.
I'm okay with that. I could go with that, too.
Okay. Should?
Sure. Yes, please.
Okay. Should I continue with the others?
Please.
So for 9-12, "The project, which is in close proximity to and visible from Highway One, does not protect views to upland slopes as seen from Highway One because it does not minimize intrusions into the ridgeline."
Yes.
I could read the final? Sure.
I'm just not so sure about minimize. Does try to minimize, but, let me look at it again. That's 12.
Yes, it is.
No, I mean, I would just say that it doesn't protect views of visual resource areas as seen from the Town Boulevard, including views to the upland slopes. And I would take out the minimize intrusions into the ridgeline.
And so to, to confirm that I captured that was that, that the project, which is in close proximity to and visible from Highway One, does not protect views to upland slopes as seen from Highway One.
Thank you.
And then for 9-23, I have, "The project does not protect broad views of upland slopes and prominent ridge lines from High, from the Highway One scenic corridor because it is not cited and designed to minimize intrusions into the ridgeline through the application of appropriate height and setback restrictions." Thank you. I've, I've made edits.
Okay. I have another one as well. I don't know if this applies. Policy 9-8, the land divisions. It talks about opens, protecting open space. The open space proposed on the plan does not fit the definition of open space
You said 9.8? That's what you're talking about?
Yes, and they talk about open space. I'm pretty sure it's.
No, that's not, that's not 9.8.
It's land divisions.
To maximize open space? Is that what you're talking about?
It's, I, I think under item A of 9.8.
Yeah, there's also a C. But I don't, personally, don't know that that applies.
Okay. And then, I'm fine not using it, then, if that's something. Well, actually, I, I do think it might apply. I, I don't know, because they are doing land divisions. And this was cited as one of the policies that was in compliance. But then when I looked at the definition of what open space is in the Public Resources Code, it didn't seem to fit what they're calling open space in the project versus what the Public Resources Code states. And I think it discusses that in the EIR, in one of the responses to the EIR. A responses to a question, I think, that was posed. So it, it, I think in the first section on the FEIR, there's a section that describes all the open space definitions. And it doesn't, this one doesn't seem to fit.
Oh, sorry, just to be clear, you're just talking about C in, in 9.8? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, I'm talking about A and C. What about B?
We're going to need to extend the meeting.
I can't do that.
Then why don't we just vote?
I think we need to complete adding in the findings for denial.
Okay, well, we have five minutes.
If we could do it in five minutes, let's do it. No, not, I'm sorry, not B, maybe C?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not seeing it personally, but.
Okay, so we won't put that in. So can you read back what we have, and then we'll, we'll vote on it?
Yes, so I have findings for 9-3, 9-12, and 9-23. Should I read through those?
Sure, please.
So for 9-3, it's that, "The project does not preserve and enhance Half Moon Bay's unique visual quality because the project's height and mass interferes with expansive views of upland slopes from the coastal terrace."
Yes.
Okay. For 9-12, "The project, which is in close proximity to and visible from Highway One, does not protect views to upland slopes as seen from Highway One."
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And for 9-23, "The project does not protect broad views of upland slopes and prominent ridge lines from the Highway One scenic corridor because it is not cited and designed to minimize intrusions into the ridgeline through the application of appropriate height and setback restrictions."
Could we add Coastal Act Policy 302, 51?
We have two minutes. Can we just do this?
Do you want to say yes or no?
No.
Okay, all right. Just vote? Bridget, can you take a roll call? Or, not roll call, yeah, roll call.
Okay. Commissioner Riddick?
No.
And Commissioner Gorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
No.
Commissioner, or Vice Chair Johannes?
Yes.
And Chair Gossett?
Yes.
Motion approved to deny.
I think we're going to say meeting is adjourned. Okay.